Can get the meeting started if I, if everyone will please stand and so we can say the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, roll call. Everyone is present. If I can have an approval of the agenda, if someone would please make a motion to approve the agenda as presented.
So, second.
Okay, Jean, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion, motion passes seven zero. Jean motioned and Patrick, who seconded?
Tori.
Tori seconded, sorry. Okay, communications. We are going to have recognition of staff, students, and community volunteers. And I believe Melville High School is first.
Hi, good evening. Jason Lander, principal from Melville High School. And we're just going to spend a few minutes highlighting some of our students and their accomplishments this year. Each year when we present, we try to go at the end of the school year to try to highlight a lot of our different seniors and their activities throughout the course of the year. Our first senior that we want to talk about tonight was Paige Heitman. Paige is one of the two Missouri 100 Scholars that's going to be recognized at a luncheon in Columbia on Sunday. Being a Missouri 100 Scholar puts you in the top half of the top of the top 1% of all seniors graduating in the state of Missouri. So it's a tremendous accomplishment. Paige is a phenomenal kid. On top of being a Missouri 100 Scholar, she's also a National Merit finalist this spring and a member of our FBLA organization where she finished in the top 10 in state in two different organizations. So really proud of Paige and her accomplishments. Another senior we wanted to talk about was Kanan Mustafic. Kanan is our, Kanan is our second Missouri 100 Scholar. So we're very fortunate to have two of those top 100 here in Missouri, here at Melville. Kanan is a member of our MyPath program. He was in that in his junior year where he focused on engineering. He wanted to design a drone that would fly above fires and be able to help put out the fire and trying to help minimize the impact and safety for firefighters. So had a really, you know, unique idea and worked with our engineering teacher, Ms. Meyer, to help just design those different prototypes. He also is earning the Missouri Seal of Bilinguism. He is one of 14 seniors that are earning that distinguishment, showing their fluency in two different languages. So like I said, he's one of 14 seniors that are earning the Seal of Bilinguism. We also have three seniors that are earning the distinguished seal. And Kanan is one of seven that earned the global seal of bilinguism, kind of just taking that effort and proficiency up a certain, certain notch and kind of showing his ability to use it in both the professional and personal academic setting. Ravine Norrie is another senior here at Melville High School. He's also a National Merit finalist. He was in MyPath for two years, both his junior and senior year. He focused on architecture last year and did video and audio engineering, kind of focused on marketing this year. So really kind of did a 180 in where he was focusing. But it's really cool to see the connection between the two and what he hopes to do moving forward. Brianna May is in our South Tech program. She's in the Vet Assistant Program. And we recently found out that she is receiving the Rosemary Xander Award, which is the highest honor that Special School District gives. Brianna's done a great job at South Tech and here at Melville. And at South Tech has really been an ambassador for mental health and speaking about, and speaking about the importance of supporting students' needs. And that was, you know, really the reason that they gave her that Rosemary Xander Award. Alex Norman Burns is a senior here at Melville who's been very active in our HOSA chapter that is continually sending students to the state and international competition. They'll be going again this spring to Nashville. And besides being the president of our organization, he also served at the Missouri Organization, representing Melville and Jeff City and in Washington DC. So he's done some really cool things over the last two years. So we appreciate the work he's done. Actually, I have a rising junior next year who'll be on the same state level organization as VP. Through a CAPS program, Tamiya Miller and Sierra Shackelford are two more of our seniors. They were recognized as skilled centennial award winners, which in that skilled centennial program, they were challenged to look for a way to increase STEM education in the community. And each one of them on different teams, their teams won and were granted money to try to fund that program for STEM education. Tamiya then also was recommend, was recognized by the Gravoy Kwanis Club as their student of the year at a scholarship luncheon yesterday. Other seniors, Sean Gallagher and Logan Mitchell are members of our band program. They're in the Missouri All-State Band. They're just phenomenal musicians. A couple of years ago, we had the fortune to have some really great Division One basketball players here at Melville. And it was really cool to see that recruiting process. This year, we've seen it for our musicians. And it's so cool to see with our performing arts students, just the opportunity that, you know, see them get recruited by these really phenomenal music conservatories and, and top-notch music programs. So they're going to continue their education. Sean at Oklahoma City and Logan at Illinois Wesleyan. So we're excited to see what they, they do moving forward. Also want to highlight our Melville soccer team. They finished in the state quarterfinals this year. And five of the seniors that are there on the screen had, had a ton of postseason accolades. They were all, all district and all conference. Nico Katar Nikia was also all-region and was the region player of the year, representing not just Missouri but states in the Midwest. Ben Durkovich, in addition to being one of the seniors I mentioned earlier for SEAL by Literacy, also, also was on the Missouri All-Academic Team. Meldon Sabatic was the goalie for the all-region team, goalie of the year. And then Dino Mahmudovic also was on that all-region team. So just really proud of our soccer team and the accomplishments they had this year. I'll kind of keep them with that athletic theme. Naida Abdianovich was a three-time state qualifier for wrestling. And the one year she didn't make it was her sophomore year when the state tournament didn't happen and in spring of 2020. She also eclipsed 100 wins for her, her career here at Melville, which is really impressive accomplishment for a wrestler. And then our senior night for basket, boys' basketball. We highlighted Mike Wagner, who was a manager on both the basketball and football program for several years. I just have a quick little video that was shot from senior night. Proud that night was awesome. Marquette was a great partner to work with us. And just seeing the look on Mike's face, he scored that basket and drained it on the first shot. So that was awesome. So just, we actually could highlight all, you know, 300-plus of our seniors and many more of them will get recognized at our senior awards night in a few weeks. But that was just a small snippet of some of the students that we wanted to highlight. And then to kind of wrap up, Oakville and I wanted, Brian Brennan and I wanted to speak a little bit about the play, the musical that happened just a few weeks ago. I know many of you had an opportunity to see it. Our spring musical was Legally Blonde. And not only was it one of our first live productions with an audience in a few years, but it also was a joint effort between Melville and Oakville Drama Departments and directors working together. So we have a few of the students that participated in the show. I'd like to welcome them to come up. Ellie Neighbors was Paulette Buffant, did a great job in that role. Kamani Collins, he played Emmett in the, in the production. And then Kyra Lyles was our stage manager and costume designer. So some of our Melville students and Mr. Brennan.
We had three that were supposed to be coming tonight, but Hannah Liberoff and Ellie Dong are tied up. They got held up at the Missouri State solo and ensemble performance that was taking place at Mizzou. So they were unfortunately able to make it tonight. But I do have Sammy Cuyath here. She played an integral role in this whole thing. I don't know if any of you had the opportunity to go see this. I, I hope you did. My daughter and I went Saturday night and it was, it was wonderful. It really was. And it was so fun to see the kids get the opportunity to be on a stage in front of a live audience, which is something that's been lacking for the last few years. And they did a terrific job. So we're very proud of, of the collaboration that took place between the two programs and look forward to doing a lot more of that in the future.
So I'm going to chime in just for a second because I went and Patrick came also. And I have to tell you that I did not anticipate having such a wonderful time. I had an absolute blast watching you guys. It was funny. It was sad. It was, it was just cute. So you guys did a great job.
I, I went to Radium Girls in the fall as well. It was phenomenal. Great job. Sammy from Oakville, right? I believe I recognize you from Magical Dinner Theater. It was great. I'm an Oakville Choir alum, so I love that. You guys, it was excellent. It was phenomenal. Great job. It was awesome. Can't wait for fall next year.
And I was telling them here that my daughter still sings the song. I'm still listening to the full soundtrack now.
Right.
Great job, guys.
Are we doing Oakville first or is Oakville still have presentation? No, okay. Melville NEA.
Thank you. My name is Chris Teis. I'm here to award the Melville NEA Students of the Month for Oakville Senior and Melville Senior. Hi. So first I'll start with Melville Senior. Emily Veloso. Lasala. Melville, at Melville NEA, we'd like to recognize Emily, who is a junior at Melville Senior High, as one of April's Students of the Month. Emily is a wonderful student, athlete, and member of National Honor Society. She's intelligent, caring, and has demonstrated her strength, the perseverance at school and at home. Recently, at home with family, Emily has been, had to become a caretaker. But she has stayed engaged, strong, and has continued to be the amazing student that she is with a smile on her face. Congratulations, Emily. Usually my wife does this, but she's at home ill. And for Oakville's Student of the Month, it's my pleasure to give April's award to Logan Morelli. Logan is a sophomore, yet despite his age, he has a rare trait of being comfortable speaking to adults. His loquacious and confident manner makes him a natural leader in class, setting a good example for his peers. One conversation with Logan and you can tell that he is genuinely cares about others, speaking often about helping family and friends. His work ethic is beyond most students and many adults. Worked several jobs and having recently had surgery on his elbow was worried about his lawn, lawn care customers. Therefore, it is my pleasure to award Logan Morelli with Melville's Student of the Month.
Okay, now we have open period for patron comments relating to board agenda items. And we have two people signed up. Grant Spencer will be the first speaker. And I will remind you that you have three minutes allotted per person. When a group wishes to address the board, the group must pick a spokesperson and that individual will be given five minutes to speak for the entire group. If you hear the buzzer and are not yet finished, please try to finish up that thought and conclude quickly as we will have to stop you shortly after in order to maintain consistency. Discussion of individuals or specific situations will not be allowed. The board will strictly enforce these rules and speakers will be interrupted if they discuss matters that might violate board rules and policy. Grant?
All right, thank you. And I'm here to request the, consider the elimination of any threshold to reinstitute masking on any person, whether adult or student in any building in the district. At this stage, there is just too much information readily and easily available to contest the notion that a threshold for universal masking should be needed, let alone effective. For example, epidemiologist Paula Alexander wrote in an article for Brownstone Institute titled, "More than 150 comparative studies and articles on mask ineffectiveness and harms", in which he writes, "Current," or quote, "current evidence implies that face masks can actually be harmful. The body of evidence indicates that face masks are largely ineffective," end quote. And when masked, most kids do wear the cloth masks, right? Yet Dr. Leanna Wen on CNN had said that, quote, "cloth masks are little more than facial decorations," end quote. Why should there be a threshold for facial decorations? I'd like to point out another quote. This one's a little bit longer, a little bit more local. It's just from over, from over, or just over a month ago regarding masking thresholds. Quote, "I do think that there's a big benefit to being unmasked when it's safe because communication and teaching is made less efficient when you can't see people verbalize things. So if it's a yes or no answer on whether or not to remove it right now, I would. I would hope that there would be some middle ground on moving it up from 1.5. But if it's a yes or no on removing it, I would vote to remove it today because it's not exactly that relevant right now," end quote. Well, it's from one of our newest members on the board. And I actually agree with that quote. Completely agree that the masking threshold is not relevant, especially given the body of credible data from multiple sources that contradict the notion that they may again become necessary. Now there are, that's being said, there are masks that are said to protect the individual wearer, such as properly fitted N95s, et cetera, none of which most people wore when masking or from what I understand, woolwind has to go back to masks. I feel sorry for those parents and kids. Yet a compromise might possibly be to perhaps move to strongly, strongly recommend things like N95s if or when buildings pass a 1.5% threshold, rather than force healthy asymptomatic children and adults into a one-size-fits-all solution. Thank you.
Hi, my name's Julie Droney. I wanted to talk a little bit about the strategic plan. And I had notes on my phone and then the battery died. So please definitely cut me off because I will just keep talking. Last meeting, there was talk about themed schools. And just as a parent, I had a lot of questions about it. And the more I thought about it, the more I just felt like these are things to consider, just from like a logistics standpoint. So the first one would be, what if interests change? So speaking of elementary students, elementary school age students, they can, their changes can fluctuate frequently. So like what would, what wouldn't be the answer if there was interest change? The second thing would be transportation. And this kind of goes along with the sibling question. What if you have students that have more than one interest and they're both in elementary school? So how would that work if they're getting out at the same time, but they're in different schools? Would they be split if transportation's not provided and a parent has to, to provide it? If they can't afford to drive their kids to work and they have to rely on public transportation, would that mean they would have to go to a school that might not fit their particular interest just because of the transportation, lack of transportation? Also, I actually went to, one of my eight schools I went to growing up, one of them was like a magnet school. And I don't have anything against that idea of a themed school per se, but it's, it's kind of, you have to tailor it to a specific group. And I think there's a benefit to having students that have varied interest in a classroom and maybe not just a classroom filled with everyone who is very STEM-focused or music-focused. I was performing arts, but there's a benefit to having a classroom with diverse perspectives on things. I also, as an educator, I feel educators already, already are great at bringing in student interest and making material engaging. So I'm not sure like an entire school needs to be through that particular lens. Also, like what if there's more children that are interested in one topic and the school can only accommodate so many, but another school's theme doesn't have as much interest? Are kids going to have to go to a school that doesn't fit their interests? And could it be counterproductive? Because if the goal was to increase engagement, could it potentially be like counterproductive? Because maybe the school's like filtering everything through STEM when they like poetry and music. So that's basically it. I probably had more, but I didn't have my notes. So thank you.
Thank you, Julie. Okay, student achievement. If we could have Melville High School data report?
Okay, so tonight, we're taking a little bit of a different spin on our annual traditional report. Dr. Gaines asked us to talk just a little bit about our FLEX program, which is our new competency-based transdisciplinary micro-school that will be opening up as an option for our students in the fall of this year for the incoming freshmen for the class of 2022. So with me, I have Kristen Bush and Stephanie Juliana, who are teachers within our FLEX program. And they're going to be able to speak a little bit about it as well. So what FLEX is, is it is a half-day transdisciplinary program open for students that are just interested in a little bit of a different, unique challenge to start their high school career. So it's going to have several different courses that we'll talk a little bit about that are going to be embedded in that transdisciplinary approach where we're seeing the, the connections and overlapping of the content and where the teachers are working together to design lessons to show, you're not just using, you know, your, your math brain in this class or English brain here that, you know, just like we do in our jobs every day. We're kind of melding all those different skills and contents that we've learned into one area. So the teachers have had opportunities and have been spending time these last two years in our planning process looking for those, those opportunities for overlap and working together. So in that FLEX course, we're going to emphasize that personalized learning through not operating within our traditional bell schedule and having a lot more flexibility in student choice and what the day looks like as far as how they spend time in that half-day portion of their program and how they want to utilize the resources that they have from their classroom teachers to some of the building labs that'll happen in our engineering classes. So they're going to have some autonomy in what that looks like and the ability to get support and feedback from the teachers along the way. Every time we talk about FLEX for us, when we have a meeting and kind of our brainstorming and planning processes, we always want to come back to our why. Two years ago, when we really started this conversation, had a lot of, I personally had a lot of conversations with Scott Clark and kind of that process that went through with the Mosaic team. And, and you know, he's the one that really kind of gave me that, that idea of making sure that we're always coming back to that. And what is our home base? So what we're hoping comes out of this program is just nurturing, you know, more self-aware students that are confident in their abilities, able to speak through their strengths and ask questions about how to, how to improve in different areas and that they're creative and they're problem-solving and they're looking for just unique challenges across the board. So one thing that we, that we hope to do is for students to see the relevance in all the classes that they take here at Melville, not, you know, both in and out of the FLEX program. But we want to make sure that we're offering extending opportunities for, for students. And, you know, just like we've done in MyPath in the past, we know that, we think that this is going to be a program that does the same thing. It opens up more opportunities for our students throughout their high school experience. So a little bit about how we arrived here. Really, like I mentioned MyPath before, or I can talk about some of our other choice programs. For us, really, we feel like it's just the continued evolution of the high school experience. You know, we're talking about transdisciplinary approach where we're melding, melding five different content areas together. We've already done things like this in other areas where we have our geometry and construction class that Stephanie teaches, which is taking a tech ed and a math class and putting them together, or Amp algebra. So again, it's just another evolution of that. And I feel like we're fortunate here at Melville to have, have teachers that are always looking for the best way to engage their students in redesigning their lessons. And like I said, it's just another piece of that. Also, it was part of the district charge to have personalized options for students at all levels and really just expanded opportunities. And through our conversations, kind of going back to that why, we always came back to that portrait of a graduate and looking at those skills. And I talked earlier about, you know, students being empowered and being self-aware. And then that's obviously one of our portrait of a graduate skills, you know, being creative, problem-solving, things like that. So we're looking at not just the, the content and how it works together, but how we're really emphasizing the development. but how we're really emphasizing the development of those skills throughout the work that, that students will do in this program. So a little bit about the timeline over the last two years that has brought us here, and in kind of on the doorstep of our first FLEX cohort starting, starting in August. These are some of the highlights, really even before February of 2020, different things that have happened here at the district level. Stephanie and I both had the opportunity, with a lot of our middle school teachers and high school math teachers, to hear Rick Warmley speak about standards-based grading, and kind of that emphasis on, on learning as the goal, and not being so stringent on time, which is something I think we always see in the high school schedule, with our 90-minute blocks and, and just time crunch from quarter one to quarter two, focusing on learning as the constant, as opposed to that time driving things. Starting in February of 2020, our team had the opportunity to visit some schools in Chicago, and see things that they were doing. And what we've had the fortune to do, fortune to do in the last two years, is see these different programs, and kind of take the best features of them, and then feel, how can that work here for Melville? And, and make it work for our students and what our needs are. So following that visit, we also got to spend some time working with I4PL, talking about their personalized learning honeycomb model that focuses on learner profiles, on personalized progressions, which will, again, you'll see through that competency-based model. John Dewali had the opportunity through a grant to take part of our team to Westminster Public Schools, their competency-based summit there, a full K-12 competency district in Denver. And again, had the opportunity to see what it looks like there. Once we took all these ideas from the, you know, spring of 20 through, through the fall of this year, we started, you know, ironing out the details of what that would look like. We brought in parents from our middle schools, reached out to both Washington and Berkeley, asking for students that were, and families that were involved in the academy program, as well as Mosaic, but also wanted to make sure that we were inviting families that were not part of those programs. And we had representatives from there, as well as some of our parochial schools in the community that we know send a lot of students to us at high school. So we wanted to ask questions of those families as to, you know, what are they looking for in their high school experience? And to talk about the design of the FLEX program and get their feedback. What, what were positives that they saw? What questions did they have? Or what, you know, how could they challenge us to, to kind of rethink what we were working on? We know that the, that we feel that this program, you know, may appeal to our Mosaic families or our academy, our academy families, but the reason we wanted to make sure that we included non-academy and non-Mosaic families is we wanted to make sure this was a program that was reaching everybody, and was interested, interesting to everybody, and it was available to all students. So kind of wrapping up where we've been here this spring, we have the opportunity to visit Liberty, which I know the Mosaic team did that as well, to see Epic Elementary. We're going to see their Edge program, which is a transdisciplinary program that they just opened this year. So the opportunity to see and learn from what's gone on in year one. And then we'll have that opportunity for that first FLEX cohort to start with us in August. We're going to have a parent night with those families in May, to kind of explain a little bit more about the program, and then we'll, we'll kick that off in, in August. I'm going to turn things over to Stephanie to talk a little bit more about competency.
So our competencies are... I should do this the best I can.
Could you please use the microphone?
Yes, ma'am, sorry. So our competencies are like, it's really kind of hard for us to get our heads wrapped around, but today, like, the light bulb went off for me. So I know in, in math, we have like a, like our eight big practice, our eight big standards, like we construct a viable argument. And then under that, we have a, what do you teach, like a systems of equations? So the kids might hit those competencies multiple times throughout, but we're going to have like eight, eight to 10 competencies for each one of us. And then what do you teach? Those are the standards underneath. And then your learning progressions are, how do you get there, right? So the idea is, the kids won't be able to go on until they reach that standard, right? You shouldn't be able to go to chapter two unless you meet chapter one, right? Through authentic assessment. And, and hopefully, I should be able to link US history to math, right? And I should be able to link that through Kristin's engineering essentials class, and hit that through English, so the kids aren't just going, well, I saw that in math, and now I'm done with math. Just like in my construction class, I can teach geometry, and the kids can go outside and build something, and that's really, that's really awesome for them. Great class. And so just like Dr. Lander said, the time is always just a, it's, we just live on a bell schedule here, and that's not what that's supposed to be for the kids. Why do we live on a bell? So the kids are going to be very aware of the content and their standards, and what they needed to move on, you know, how they move on. So every kid could be at a different place. I'm not going to hold them back. You have to be on page one, page two. Everybody doesn't have to do that. And then this should free up some time, so each one of us should have more time to give kids feedback. That's, that's really important, should be important to everybody in the building. But that should just be, I should be able to meet with every kid on a daily basis, or as often as they need me. Yeah? Kristen's turn.
I'm going to talk a little bit about the personalization, and we've seen a little bit of that with Mosaic, and they get to choose the different ways that they learn some of those things. A lot of our personalization is going to come down to time. And so if a kid is struggling in a certain subject, then they can get more time in that subject. If they already have a concept, then they can move on a little bit quickly. So they're going to learn how to reflect upon their own learning and understand what really is important to them. And so not only will they be able to hit the things and basically check off those competencies as they go, but we're hoping that that's also going to give them a little bit of time to have a little bit of a passion project as a seed for our MyPath program that's going to go forward. And plus, if they want rewards and more time in building in the engineering lab, then they can set their schedule up for that. The courses that we're going to have are these five that are displayed. And one of the reasons why we put these in, especially the engineering essentials, it looks kind of weird in there, engineering essentials is all problem-solving. And so we're using that as a base to kind of bring all of those other four back to the integration that we wanted to see. Our FLEX day, like Dr. Lander said, is going to be open for those first two blocks at our high school. So the kids here are also going to be able to experience a normal freshman schedule in the afternoon, lunches with everybody, the different electives that they can choose. But they're going to have more open time, and one of the ways that we structured that is that we are all in the same hall. We have access to our foreign language immersion room. We have access to the engineering lab. We have access to the outside quad. We have access to the library. And so we're going to be utilizing multiple things throughout. And one of the other programs that we invested in is a scheduling program. So the five of us are continually going to be setting up different modules and different schedules based on what we're learning. So they might pick a 40-minute module to be with me in the engineering lab, or a 20-minute module to get some help with Stephanie in whatever math class that they're taking, or a personal one-on-one conference with Ms. Kern to go over their research paper. So we're going to do a lot of different things based on what the kids need, and based how we're going to be rolling through the whole content. Oh, and then we're going to have extra credits. So if they do everything correctly their freshman year, they can end up with nine credits. And why is that cool? They get to do more of the cool programs. We're hoping that a lot of these kids are going to be those ones that go into MyPath, that go into CAPS, that might do early college, early college classes and stuff like that. Or they just might have more time at the high school to do the things that they really like, and become really good high school kids.
And Kristen said with that, that flexible scheduling piece, and the team working to design those modules for students, we feel like that's kind of comparable to that learning menu, where students know what they need to be working on, but they have that autonomy to decide how to structure their time, which again goes back to them being effective, you know, time managers, and really utilizing the resources that they have, and maximizing what they can do here, and finding that, then those passion projects and other things that they also want to do with that additional time that comes out of it. So kind of what's next for us, you know, in addition to opening in, in the fall here with our, our first cohort of freshmen, we're hoping that, you know, once we get those, those legs underneath us, that freshman year, that's just going to continue to grow, and then the word will be out on, on the great things that, that the teacher team is doing, and expand that freshman enrollment to include more members of the class of 2027, and so on. We're going to have an opportunity for a sophomore-year version of FLEX. We've, having initial conversations about that now, knowing that we would want to bring a group of teachers on to help with this team and plan what that sophomore year looks like, expanding to offer more courses, including some different PLTW or AP courses in that sophomore year. And then really kind of what that junior year could look like, it's still really to be determined. We're going to use, you know, the ICAP and the student choices for scheduling and, and what their goals are to help, help us design what we could have for junior year. We talk a lot about pathways, and, and we feel like we have a lot of opportunities for students. And that's why, you know, we can't say that we're going to talk about a transdisciplinary team of, of five different courses for junior year, because of the pathways that we already have. And we may see that at the end of that sophomore year experience for, for next year, at the end of that, that sophomore year, that then they're kind of going into the traditional pathways we already have. We're going to continue to let that evolve, and, and review and reflect on how, how year one goes and how we grow, to really look at what that, that sophomore year experience could look like. So a little bit of an overview of the FLEX program, and happy to, you know, answer any other questions you guys may have on it.
Okay, good. Can I go? Okay. Thank you, thank you. Um, yeah, that's, it sounds wonderful. Thank you for that thorough explanation to help us get a better picture of how that's going to look. I'm wondering how many students you'll be able to accommodate, and how that's being advertised to the incoming freshmen? How are you collaborating with families on, on all of that?
Yes, I think it really started with that focus group, just trying to get information from families. So that was in, in talking to Washington and Berkeley, they, they sent us some families that they would recommend us, you know, speaking with. And then we also just recruited some other Melville families that have had multiple students go through the building. We knew they had more, you know, middle schoolers coming up now. So we started that process there, but then since then, that was like a small focus group. Then we opened it to just a, a parent night in December for any eighth-grade parent that wanted to come. Promoted that on, on social media and through Parent Square. And then we had our eighth-grade preview night, that again was open to all, all incoming freshmen for the class of 26. And there was a section of the night that spoke to FLEX, both at like the large presentation, and then also in the, like, breakout and building tours. After that, we did visit the middle schools and did some presentations there for some of the students, and kind of followed up with an additional parent email. And so some stuff on social media, actually Hunter and Jessica helped put together a video for us as well, that we used to promote the program.
Okay. Do you have a plan for how many the program will accommodate?
Yeah, the, we, our goal for that first freshman year, the cohort was going to be anywhere up to 100 students in that program. Right now, we have plenty of room for growth still in there, and we've had families, whether they're our current middle school families that are reaching out to our counselors, talking about options, or some of our, you know, parochial students that are coming in, or just new, moving into the district. When they talk with our counselors and know kind of the options, they're choosing either maybe the traditional experience, or, or to opt in. So students could still, either as new enrollees, or just because they've now decided they've heard more about it, maybe they didn't, they didn't pay as much attention to that first social media blast, or they didn't, didn't really see that part of eighth-grade preview night, but sometime now in the spring or over the summer, want to move into it, they can just reach out to their current counselors at the middle schools, who will put them in touch with us, or our counselors here, and we can make those schedule changes.
Okay, thank you.
Oh, yes, thank you very much. It's very interesting looking, and I think it's going to be fantastic for a lot of our students. My only concern is the, if the FLEX student completes their course ahead of schedule, they get to investigate personal topics of interest. How is that going to be monitored, and is there any, I mean, is there any way they could use, if they, if they complete the course, I guess this is just a little, this is going to have to all be figured out, I'm sure. But I, I'm just a little concerned about dead space, you know what I mean?
So, so when the students have that half-day of time, they still, through that, the scheduling software that we're using, they'll, they'll fill that time through either specific modules in different teachers' classrooms, or modules here in our library, or in the, the engineering lab. So they do have some like project time, where they could be working on a specific, you know, project or different assessment for, for one of the classes, or the classes, you know, the themes of that class is put together. If they were to move through, you know, the entire competencies specific to like algebra one and Stephanie's course, and some of the programs that we've seen, you know, we, we've, we've heard that, you know, that happens for some, not, not the majority, especially in that, in that first year of implementation. But that's where, and we talked about the, the potential of a connection with MyPath, where students are able to use the information from their ICAP, or what we use in SCORE, which has a program called U-Scienc, where students are doing different aptitude activities that then can help give them areas of interest that maybe they weren't even aware that they should explore. So we can use that data from, from SCORE and U-Scienc to help give them some ideas if they don't have that kind of idea off the top of their head already, to look into something else that they maybe want to explore. And then we talk about how that may connect to the engineering class, or how it may connect to something else in the program.
That sounds wonderful, because, you know, I'm, I'm sure the motivation levels vary greatly among the students, even the ones that would participate in this program. I, you know, that not everybody is highly motivated enough to, you know, be, you know, consider what they need to do next to get, you know, make that next move forward. So I'll be interested in seeing how this pans out. It sounds really exciting.
That's where, you know, you talk about the motivation factor, and I think that's, that's something across the, the building, right? We always, we want students to be self-motivated, but we know that they need our encouragement in different areas. So while they have a lot of flexibility and choice to design their day, we also have the ability, as, as a teacher group, to look at which, which group of students may need to work together, and really reinforce a certain skill, so.
And feed off each other.
Right, so while they, while they have autonomy to choose that, we also have the ability to work with them. Like Stephanie talked about the feedback, and that's, that's really one of our, kind of our home bases, too. The opportunity to, to talk one-on-one or in small groups, but then that team can identify, you five would really benefit if we worked together in this 30-minute or 50-minute module on something. So while there is a lot of autonomy, we still have the ability as well to help drive a little bit of that when, when needed, and then, again, pull back and, and let them move forward on their own.
Sounds great. I'm anxious to see it in action.
Yes, too. Lot of time talking about it. We're excited for August, when we're actually living it and getting to work with our kids in it.
I have a couple of questions. So at first glance, it kind of comes across as very STEM-focused, but after hearing you speak, it sounds like you can go ahead and put in somebody who's more focused into arts and literature, and pair them with somebody else that's maybe better at math than they are, and they can feed off of each other, which I think is fantastic. I think that maybe that should be promoted more, so people that are more arts and literature-focused aren't afraid to get into it and learn a little bit more about STEM. And I think it's a great opportunity for people that don't think that they're really interested in it, to come in and, and focus on that. So that was just a comment. That was supposed to be a question until you explained it. Another thing is, I see a lot of similarities between Mosaic and the academies and this program. Are you all planning to get together and have kind of focused quarterly meetings to see like what's working and what's not? I really do feel like you guys could really pull off of each other, you know, your experiences, and, and make it beneficial for all three of those types of learning with those project-based focuses.
Absolutely. And I think, you know, I mentioned Scott in the team. We have, we went over and visited a couple of times this year, but Scott's been somebody who's come over and, again, talked with me or talked with us. So I think, you know, collaborating with them, and, you know, they've, they've been working in that personalized learning PPL environment for, for several years now, and getting ideas, and actually, one of our teachers on our team, his son is at Mosaic right now, so he's got to see it from that parent lens, and, and talk from that end, and then get ideas about how, again, what he's seeing and what we can take here. Same with the middle school academies. We've been to Bernard and Berkeley and Washington as well, to be in those classrooms, talk with the students in there. And as actually Kristen talked about, the, the structure of the day, and some of the feedback that we got from the students was, you know, they loved the structure, but sometimes they felt like they were not always a part of their full building, just by different structural pieces, so that's why we really wanted to be intentional in how we designed it. So students still were taking any elective, you know, band, choir, orchestra, art, you know, facts, anything like that, that they could fit into their schedule. But, but definitely learning from our own district and, you know, others in the region that are doing similar things is just going to help us get better.
Yeah, and sharing, you know, if you're visiting these places, and I think your experiences would help them, and if they're visiting other places, theirs would help you. So I think it'd be really great to look into seeing what's, what's working and what's not for all three types. Thank you.
I just have a quick comment, really quick. I've been to over 100 events at Oakville and Melville since August of this year, and I want to say, if I ever want to be humbled or put to shame, Steph and Kristen are great representatives of this group, so I'm so glad to see you guys involved with this progress, or this project. They're at everything, and Stephanie's one of the best follows on Twitter in the district. She always, it's so interesting to see what her geometry students are doing, and all the projects that they're doing at MHS. And I'll give a quick shout-out to Jason, who's the head principal at MHS. He's also a district alumni. And I know Jason probably feels exactly like me. It's like, it's like, you see all these things that are happening at our district high schools now, and you're like, man, not that I want to go back to high school at all, but it would have been so cool to be around for all these unique opportunities that are now available for our kids through MyPath and early college. And this is just going to add another layer to all of our choice programs, and I'm just so proud to have it. So I wanted to say thank you guys so much, and I, I really appreciate how involved you guys are, not only when you guys are setting things up like this, but also there's not a night of the week that I'm ever here that I don't see one of you three. So thank you so much.
Well, I want to thank you for putting this piece into place. I have kids going to Mosaic, and one is about to go from Mosaic to Bernard. And there was always this piece of their, of their transition that it seemed like, once they got out of middle school academy, it wasn't going to be until junior year that they would start having some personalization options. So this is that one piece that now falls into place, so they can have a personalized learning path from start at Mosaic and all the way to the end. So I think synergizing with Mosaic is genius. I mean, the fact that I've seen benefits with my kids... with Mosaic is genius. I mean, the fact that I've seen benefits with my kids who have been there for four years now, and giving them the opportunity to work at their own pace, giving them the opportunity to say, here, this is what you need to do, you do it on your schedule. For a lot of parents, they get a little bit concerned about how it works. I've seen it for four years. For some kids, it's phenomenal. Other kids, it's not for them. But I'm glad the option exists and that we're working within ourselves to make that start from kindergarten all the way up to 12th grade and give them the options that they want. So I want to thank you all for putting that last piece for my kids that will be able to path their way from start at Mosaic and end up graduating. So thank you.
I'm fine, too. Thank you very much for the great presentation. And I only have one thing to add. If you're going to do this, you have to be able to do the heel click, like Scott does.
I don't know if I, I'm not as athletic as Dr.
Anyway, thank you very much.
Thank you.
So now we have Oakville High School data report.
Good evening. I'm Brian Brennan. I'm the principal of Oakville High School. I'm joined tonight by Jason Beatt and Michael Wagner, the two assistant principals at Oakville. We are grateful for the opportunity to speak with you tonight, kind of talk about some of the things that we've been seeing at Oakville, some of the things that have gone on throughout the year. So just a little snapshot of us to start off with. Our enrollment, we've been tracking and looking at over the last several years. If you look, 1718, we were right around 1,600 students. This current year, we're at 1,728. And after speaking with the counselors today, we are projected to be at over 1,800, 1,825-ish, starting in the fall. So quite a bit of growth has gone on there. So here's a, just kind of a little breakdown of some of the demographics that we have in the building. The two that caught my attention were the EL. We currently have one ELL teacher, and she is servicing 12 different languages beyond English this year. And that continues to grow for us. We are having to deal with that. And she's done a phenomenal job with that. Kathy Poe's been great. And our special ed percentage of students with IEPs continues to grow. Next year, speaking with Ms. Wilson, the area coordinator for SSD, we are projected to be around 18%, almost 20% of our students being serviced with an IEP. Our attendance rate, as you can see, historically, we're between 94 and 95% on things. Obviously, we had a big dip there, as you would all assume we would during 2021 school year. We are creeping back up. This year, we're getting, closing back in on the 94% rate. If you look at this year, you can see there was a bit of a drop right in the middle of the year, which happens to correspond with the Omicron. So that's when we were basically dictating to kids, you can't come to school. So that caused our, our attendance to dip at that point. But we're starting to climb back up at this point, move back forward. Postgraduate choices, we have lots of choices for our kids. You can see that still the highest percentage of our kids do attend four-year schools, but we have opportunities for them, whether it be a four-year school all the way to whether I just want to go out and find a job, I'm done with school, or going to the military, or things along those lines. Our two-year school numbers have been coming up. More and more kids, I think, are staying home because of COVID. That contributed a great deal. And we're also having more kids take the A+, participate with the A+ program as well.
Good evening, everybody. So to kind of piggyback with Mr. Brennan, some of the access and opportunity, we feel that a lot of the decisions about where our graduates go post-high school are directly related to the opportunities that they have while in high school. And we're very proud of this chart. Gives you an idea with some numbers of how many students that we have enrolled at Oakville High School that are currently taking advantage of a plethora of opportunities that we have. I believe that our district is the largest supplier of students to South Tech. Got over 700 students enrolled in AP courses. Some of you had the luxury to see some of our great MyPath presentations this morning as well. So we've got some great access and opportunities for our students. Couple things we wanted to highlight and recognize, some of our other students that couldn't be at the meeting, but we had a young lady who, who gave her presentation about creating clothing for students with special needs. We have some, some ladies who are trying to create something that they can leave to future students in the Melville School District with a nature center. I had the opportunity this morning to go to Mercy South and watch five of our CAP seniors give what they call passion projects. I think if I had to summarize those, it would just be very inspiring and the amount of courage that I saw from those students. All of them spoke about something that was extremely personal to them. We had Mia Flannoy on the right, up there on the screen, who is doing a project. Her grandmother has some, some struggles that she's, are very personal to her. We have Brenna Pepper, who's doing some things with cerebral palsy, Danny Nuscinovich with some immigration. We had some great things today that we're very, very proud of. So kind of continuing along that path of personalization. Mr. Wagner, I'll kind of tell you where we're at in that regard.
Good evening. About six months ago, we began our planning process into our personalized learning program at Oakville High School. We began identifying teachers that we thought would be wonderful at this style of teaching and learning. We took these teachers on a few site visits. We visited a couple of high schools in Chicago. We've also visited the academies at Oakville Middle School and Bernard Middle School. We have visited Mosaic and have had some professional development with Sadie. We have identified some areas of focus, some larger, larger scale areas of focus, but we want to spend a considerable amount of time on the professional development, on the creating the, the climate and the culture and of this style of personalized learning. So that's the, kind of the next step that we're going to take with these teachers. We are going to have ongoing professional development during half-days, and we're also going to have a few days that we are in during the summer to work. We have a great amount of students involved in MSHA activities and athletics. We have held in the mid to upper 70% of our student body involved in these particular activities and athletics this year. Last year, we were at, in the 67%, but we do expect that to rise this year as more and more students are becoming more involved after COVID. And the data collection for this particular school year will take place during the summer of '22.
So this, we have been tracking, using the Panorama surveys and checking our SEL, our social emotional learning, both for students and for teachers. And as we've gone through, we've noticed that there are a couple of areas for, potential for growth that have bubbled up as we've gone through these things. Two, the specific areas, one is related to climate, and the other is related to the sense of belonging with our students and teachers as well. So a couple of areas that we are going to address, one of those with the students is our Link Crew program that's going to go into place next year, which is going to help with the transition to high school for the incoming freshmen. It's going to partner them up with seniors and give them hopefully a connection to someone else in the building before they walk in the door. It's also going to give our seniors the opportunity to take a little ownership and a little leadership in the building as well, help them connect a little bit closer. With, in terms of the employees, if you look at our staff over the, when we start next year, we are going to have over 30% of our staff who is between years one and three with us. So there has been limited in terms of what we've done in terms of onboarding, bringing them on to the Oakville Way and what we do and what we're all about. We are looking, making great plans in order to change that. So we're going to invite all of those folks who are in years one through three to participate in that program as we move forward.
So we've always been very proud of our academic achievement. I think the MTSS initiative that the district is rolling out is another example of that. We believe that students should have access to high-quality instruction. But not only the instruction, we should be using the data that they provide to us to help us continually improve and adjust our methods so that we can provide the best education for them. So as we've gone through this year, we kind of took a look in the mirror in terms of where we were with MTSS and some systems of support. And we felt that at Oakville High School, we have some really good things in place for tier two and tier three instruction. But we felt what we were really lacking was a very strong, solid tier one base of universals. So after taking that self kind of tiered fidelity inventory, we've spent, you know, the last few months trying to establish some building universals and making sure that our teachers have some development and understanding of what those are and what it looks like in the classroom, as well as trying to start building some reading supports. It's a vital skill that is needed, you know, in every, in every classroom that our students will walk into in every facet of life. So we've had a great deal of success, I think, working with all of our departments and identifying what are some universal reading strategies and techniques that we can use.
We wanted to showcase some of the opportunities that we've been able to provide due to the use of our ESER funds. We've had over 250 students, over 15% of our students involved in a club that has been funded through ESER. We believe that this will increase the sense of belonging for both teachers and students. Our after-school tutoring is one additional opportunity that we have for additional help for students. We have 142 students that have been involved with this tutoring. And of that 142, a lot of them are repeats. They do come back time and time again for this additional help.
And the final component we want to talk about with ESER funding is kind of near and dear to me, is I have the senior class this year. We've been able to staff some credit recovery within our building, formerly night school that was held in the Scope Building. We've been able to bring that back to Oakville High School, which is more accessible for our students. We're very proud that we've had 29 students who are taking advantage of that, working with five teachers. So that allows those teachers to work very closely with a handful of students. And even more so proud that five of them have completed credit recovery courses, which is going to help them walk across that stage on June 5. So we're very excited about that.
Okay, that's kind of us in a snapshot this year. We thank you for the opportunity. We'll do our best to answer whatever questions you might have for us at this point.
I have a question about, you had spoke about the universal reading strategies and kind of focusing on tier one and bringing everybody together. Could you give an example of kind of what that looks like, or just an example of something that's being utilized?
Sure. So our, our process kind of started with identifying universals within all classes. So we started off with something as simple as making sure we're teaching the curriculum, and then making sure we're teaching learning targets. And we put a huge emphasis on not just writing the learning target on the board, but being able to speak to that and referencing it, and maybe having kids discover what does that learning target mean. We've got students who are writing what they think the learning target was after being in the class. So just putting a concerted effort to doing more than just writing it on the board. After we kind of had some success with that, then we started with our leadership group, which is a representation of all departments, core departments, electives, everything, you know, every, everything that we have in our building. And we basically had them within their departments identify things that they do to help struggling readers already. Because a lot of our teachers do these great things, they're just not, we're not aware that they're MTSS-related, or that these are tier one universals. So we took kind of a brainstorming of topics that teachers do, just as good instruction across the board. And then we started to identify themes. So the themes that we emerged out of that were that most people are doing something that is vocabulary. Most people are doing some things that are geared around summarizing to check for comprehension. And then I think the other one was visualizing. So we, we kind of are taking those three as our universals for reading, to hopefully plan professional development for next year around ways that we can teach, you know, vocabulary, summarization, comprehension, and then ways that we can take content that people read and make it more visual for some of our learners.
Wonderful. Thank you. Thank you.
Thanks for the presentation. I love the fact that you guys identified two different areas you were looking at improving. One was Panorama. And I guess that the way that you're going to measure that is look at Panorama results next year and see if there's any uptick in that?
Right.
So what is the measure that you're going to use for looking at your tier one improvements? What is the data, and when will that be analyzed?
We have begun to look at our walkthroughs in terms of what identifying are these things being used in the class. We have a baseline. We worked with Rachel Amet, who came in and did a, did a walkthrough with us, or for us, actually took through the, the different things that we identified, different themes that we identified. And she went through the room into each class. She made it to every single class and identified, okay, here's what I'm seeing, just in this snapshot. She's not there the whole time. She's there maybe five, six minutes, 10 minutes tops. But she gets an idea from what she's seeing in there. Are they, are they meeting what we're establishing as our universals? Are they doing that? So she's created that and pulled that data for us. So that's what we're using as our baseline right now. And then we will take that and we will progress as we go through in the fall, when we go back and start, really starting to implement these things and put these things into our PD and say, okay, how have we progressed from where we were in the spring, where our initial score was? Where do we see the growth? Do we see the growth that we're hoping at that point?
Outstanding. So then, does it, you're, what you're saying, is it, is it going to be sort of continually monitored throughout the next school year?
Absolutely.
And then you're going to make adjustments on the fly?
Absolutely.
Outstanding.
I'll just go really quick. Doing something really similar would be unfair if I did it for MHS, but now you guys, you know, you guys all know that I love you. Just wanted to give a special shout out to the 220 students, and obviously in PLTW, Dr. Kryling, just wanted to say hello to him. I'm sure he's tuned in right now. Jason, I'm sad that you're going to be at OMS next year, but obviously, I'm happy that you chose to stay with the district. And then, Mr. Brennan, I'm so happy to see your promotion, and you had the distinct honor of suspending me for 10 days in high school. And I'm glad that we've both been able to see each other grow and all these awesome things together. So
I'm glad you don't hold that against me, Pat.
Hey.
We all make mistakes, and we all learn, right?
That's true. I learned, there was a lot of crying in your office that day. I'm sure there's some, we need to replace the floor in your office. There's probably a lot of salt there still. And then, Mr. Wagner, of course, district alumni, just like Jason, appreciate you being here, of course. That was my choir teacher. We accomplished big things while I was in high school. So I'm glad that I got to spend my senior year with you, and it's just been also awesome to see your progression, just as a person, being from teacher to now assistant principal. And I know you have a great future in our district and everything you do.
I am really glad to see that you guys have a plan for improving the climate and all the goals that you guys have set for both staff and kids. So you answered my questions already in our notes. But I love that you have a strategy in place, and hopefully everything will, that will improve everything, academics, everything. So anyway, I just wanted to thank you for answering my questions earlier, and appreciate it. And, you know, we love Oakville. So, good job.
Thank you very much.
Appreciate your support.
And we love Melville, too. Sorry if I didn't say that. I'm a Melville grad. I'm a Melville grad. My kids went to Oakville, so.
Thank you for all you do.
Thank you. Now we need to consider summer school meal prices. Katie?
Good evening. I'm Katie Gag, and welcome to the two board members. I'm the director of school food, so welcome. So this year and last year, the, the district utilized a USDA waiver allowing us to feed all students for free for both breakfast and lunch. That waiver is expiring at the end of this school year, so May 27 will be the last day. So with that, going into summer school the month of June, we need to set meal prices, something we haven't done in a couple of years. So I know this chart looks kind of busy, but just wanted to lay it out there. We do, with the three different pay categories, we do see, receive federal reimbursement for each one. There is, and I put this in my notes, USDA does encourage districts, and some they make mandatory, that they set their paid meal price to be the same as the reimbursement we receive for a free student, which is, you could see on that chart, would be 342, or excuse me, 373. But if a district is in good standing as of January 1, meaning and they're in the black, they don't have to do that. They could utilize their, they know what their community can handle. So we were in the black, as you guys probably all know, looking at our fund balance. So I played around with some numbers. You guys all know, going to the grocery store, food costs is going up and up and up. I kind of came up with a figure somewhat near I kind of came up with a figure somewhat near where I feel like we could withstand the food costs and not pushing it too much on our community. So I feel comfortable with placing the lunch price for summer school at $3 and that's across the board, you know, elementary to high school, and then breakfast at $2. So it's going to be an interesting summer. Families, we've, we've really done a big push thanks to communications, thanks to Adam Smith, putting the link to the Free and Reduced Meal application near summer registration. And we've seen quite about 10, 10 applications online a week, which I feel pretty good with. Hopefully that'll continue to grow because a lot of families still are probably struggling coming out of COVID. So that's kind of where we landed. We'll see how it goes with summer, but that's what I'm recommending for the summer meal prices. $2 for breakfast and $3 for lunch. Any questions about how I came up with it? And it's, it is a challenging time. I attended a meeting today and supply chain is going to continue to spiral. But they'll always have food. I say that all the time to Dr. Gaines. It might not be what's on the menu, but we will feed them. Right, Dr. Gaines?
Does anybody have any questions?
So summer school includes lunch? I mean, I thought it was like over.
Oh yeah, it's full day.
Pardon me?
Some, summer session being full day, yes. We do provide breakfast and lunch. And here at the high school, they had two sessions, a morning session and an afternoon session. We put lunch right in the middle. Much smaller participation even when they were free last summer, but it's still there for them, yes. Breakfast and lunch.
That was my only question. Thank you, Katie.
Pleasure.
I just have one and you may not even know the answer. So, you know, prices are going up. We all know it and see it. Do you know if the application for free and reduced lunch has also changed in regards to?
You mean the income grid guidelines?
Yeah.
They normally change every year. I would think that would go up. It'll come out early July.
Okay, I'll take, I'll try to find that.
And we'll blast that. We'll have that out as well, the application available as soon as possible.
Well, I'm hoping that they change it to help other students that their income may, may look high, but it's not compared to inflation. So thank you.
Most definitely.
Good. Okay. If I could get a motion to approve the recommended student meal prices for the 2022 summer session?
Patrick McKelvey, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion passes 7-0. Grace, motion, Pat, second. Thank you. Okay. Consider Blades' front entrance bid.
Good evening. So tonight I'd like to consider bids for Blades' front entrance. This work includes creating a secure vestibule to, for visitors to check in and before they enter the building. This work will include moving the office from the current location down to the west end of the building, down by the cafeteria. Also, the alternate, alternate, which we're going to ask to be to accept, would include up at the main entrance, converting that to a classroom right in front of the main entrance doors. And then also the work would include relocating the nurses' office, making a larger footprint for that, and relocating the teachers' lounge as well. So with that said, I'd like to recommend moving, move to approve to lowest qualified bid submitted by Aspire Construction Services in the amount of $2,759,840, which includes professional and contingency fees. With that said, are there any questions that you might have?
May I have any questions?
I have a question. When do they hope to start on this?
This will be the, as soon as schools out.
It's a one-year window, is the answer?
Yeah, it's a long, it's not a summer project.
And do, do they, do you feel, do they indicate whether or not they think it will take less than one year? Or?
I think it's going to take, I mean, I think they're going to be right at the, possibly, but I think they're going to be right at the one-year.
The full amount, okay.
I mean, whether, yeah, weather pending, they have good weather that can make a big difference.
Okay.
And we're confident that, um, never mind. There's no way of knowing, you know, how long, there's just no way to know, so never mind.
But you've vetted Aspire as a newer company and you've, is that what you're asking?
Yeah.
And, and they've gotten, and they came, the head guys of Aspire came from big.
Yes.
Successful companies, so you have to assume they're a newer company.
About three and a half years old, yeah.
Right. And everybody knows each other in that industry. So anybody else have any questions? Nothing? Okay. If I could get a motion then to move to approve the lowest qualified bid by Aspire Construction Services?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries 7-0. Got it?
Thank you.
Thank you. Now we have the strategic plan update employee support.
Nice to see you all. You'll have me for the next three presentations. So my apologies and let's get started. The first is the strategic plan. Also, I, every time I have to use one of these, it's a, there we go. Strategic Plan Employee Support Update. So as you recall, our strategic plan was, has been worked on all last year, approved in fall of last year. And we really have worked in earnest for the last months to find a foundation to move on the five themes that are contained in the, in the strategic plan. Tonight I'm talking about theme four, which is the employee support. So the theme states in the strategic plan, "Melville School District will support its workforce in achieving individual and organizational goals." Simple sentence, but when you break it down in the strategic plan and it's indexed, you understand that workforce is everyone. It's everyone that contributes or causes to contribute to working for the best interest of kids in this district. That can be paid employees. That can also be when and where appropriate volunteer employees. We're looking at individual and organizational goals. So those are the district and those of each member of our workforce. Support for employees requires collaboration. This slide simply lists the main players in that effort, including senior district leadership, human resources, of course, student services, classified directors, building leadership, communications, the Office of Instructional Design, but most importantly, our workforce. And in that, in that aim, we have tried to strike a balance between surveying and finding out what our workforce wants in terms of feeling a sense of belonging and engagement without harassing them. And there, there is, believe it or not, a fine balance. So we'll get to that momentarily. But the results we're working for are really in four pieces. Competitive wages is probably what everyone thinks of first when they think about employee supports. Now, in private sector, when you have profit centers, that's a different game than when you're in the education industry. So we are constantly surveying and reviewing industry and, and private sector wages to see how we can gain on those, gain on the wages of our, those, those who are likely to take our, our employees from us. Secondly, diversity, equity, and inclusion in our workforce. I say diversity in the sense that we probably all would think of diversity. Folks that are committed to continuation of the kind of culture we want to provide at Melville, but maybe have different backgrounds or identities to get there. That not only includes things like age, gender, race, but it also includes differences in ideas, perspectives, and valuing all of those. To the extent employees can have that sense of belonging, it really, it really feeds into a positive workforce. The third aspect is improved retention, engagement, and recognition. You saw earlier this week when the Communications Department put on the annual employee recognition program, which was fantastic. Those are the kinds of things we're talking about. But we're also talking about day-to-day recognition that doesn't require somebody to come up in front of the stand and inherit directly from you guys. So as long as it's consistent and continual, that is what the, the surveys are telling us in terms of what employees want. And then finally, understanding that we don't live in a vacuum. So creating and leveraging community partnerships and networks. I would point to John Dewali as like our guru on this. He knows anybody and everybody, always makes those connections. And he's a good role model for us as we learn how to do that department-wise and then as a district. All right. So the first, the first aspect is competitive wages. Momentarily, I'm going to be asking you in my next presentation to approve our classified salary structure for this year. It's the largest that I've seen in my time here and probably that you guys will see. And I can't wait to explain it to you. But in order to get to that, to that salary structure, we started doing formal studies, like I mentioned earlier, with competitive, industry and private sector competitive wages. We also look to see where our pain points are and see how we can mitigate them or reduce them. At this point, we can't alleviate them entirely, but our custodians are working right now at about 75% of capacity. And they've taken a real, a real beating over the course of COVID. IT provides us with very, very robust service. We've got a good group of employees there. We'd like to keep them. Crumbs, for instance. We have a number of pain points where we don't have sufficient staff and that staff is underpaid. As part of our negotiations, which Chris Tice is the head, or the chief negotiator rather, for the district team, and Jeff Ressler is the chief negotiator for, teacher team rather for Chris, and Jeff with the district team, are going to talk about how we looked at competitive wages inside the negotiations process. And I think we're all, we're all pleased with how that turned out. But the rationale is simple. It's that competitive wages are necessary, not, you know, they have to be there for us to recruit people, to keep them, and in terms of engagement. It's not a best-case scenario, it's a necessary scenario. All right, going on to diversity, equity, and inclusion. Looking at that as a big picture item and not just thinking about, you know, gender or ethnic groups or English language learners. How are we, how are we improving to see a holistic inclusion and sense of belonging among everybody in our district and reaching out to have an employee workforce that represents and reflects the students that go here? It's really two, it's really two things. It's recruiting and retention. So in recruiting, and this is an ongoing, I should mention that. This is an ongoing goal, as are the other four. There are certain benchmarks when grant funds or partnerships have a memorandum of understanding that may require us to meet certain benchmarks and certain timeframes. But generally speaking, these are ongoing with data gathering being this year's, this year's activity, with the task of putting that into useful action next year. So I'm looking at job fairs, not just attendance, but targeted attendance with folks from the district, whether that's administration or teachers, to find folks who maybe would not select Melville just on the strength of its name or its location, but understanding our values with respect to personalized learning, with respect to a sense of belonging, and with respect to taking, taking risk in terms of classroom instruction. We also have partnerships with HBCUs. When I talked about workforce being collaborators, a good example of that is Crystal Marard, who does the classified work in human resources, Vesna Hadrick, who is in student services, and Hunter Robinson, who does communications. They're a part of the Leadership Academy this year. And their focus was thinking about diversity in our workplace as part of, as part of like staff and seeing, you know, where we can make improvements and where we stand. They surveyed with certain specific questions regarding diversity, got those results and actually utilized them to start to create a partnership with Harris Stowe. And so that partnership will yield students coming to shadow here and also staff going to Harris Stowe to instruct, lecture, be available to let them know, to let the students know that we are looking for dynamic teachers to join us. We also are looking at Grow Your Own. We're doing that in a teacher sense. And we're also looking at that in our tech department. And then student employment, that's another version of Grow Your Own, which is, you know, letting students who are juniors or seniors complete a certain amount of hours of work here. And then if they stay local and they perhaps go to community college or a four-year university or a trade school, they could still work here part-time. Then perhaps we can leverage that into full, full employment when they come back. The other part of diversity, equity, and inclusion is retention. That's just generally workplace culture. You know, do we value each other? Staff training and professional development. That's going to be a trickle-down effect since we've already trained our administrators. We're ready to do building-level training now. Employee voice and representation, whether that's an affinity group for, for, you know, our Bosnian community, that could be a good example of that. And then again, gathering and analyzing survey data around a sense of belonging. People who feel like they belong will stay. Employees stay when they're engaged and they're recognized for their contributions. I talked about the Communications Department doing the, the year-end recognition, which is important. But we want employee recognition on consistent and continuous basis. I'd love for the board to be a part of that, whether it's letter writing, an email, a phone call. Human Resources and Communications are working on that over the summer to come up with a plan. Improve direct communications between central office and the workforce. So instead of having an intermediary, making sure that our directives and our recommendations and what we talk about is communicated to departments and to the people who are the boots on the ground, so they're not hearing kind of a telephone version of what we're doing in our end. And that's going to require us not to be, not only to be clear and concise in our communications, but also to be present in buildings and in departments. And then finally, the creating and leveraging of community partnerships and networks. I've identified partners, the results and examples. I won't belabor those, but these are educational partners. These are local business partners. And where and when it's appropriate, civic and nonprofit organizations. These provide extra layers of support for our employees. They help them develop expertise specific to their interests. And then they also help us with recruiting teachers, classified employees. I would just finally, you know, finish this presentation by saying, I think through the process of taking this first year of the strategic plan from an employee support context, we've learned that really workforce is our key collaborator. That engagement and recognition is crucial to retention. A diverse workforce benefits everyone. Importantly, data must be useful and it must be used. We don't want to be a collection, a collection of data without actually analyzing it and putting action plans into place. And finally, where we can't find employees, we should look to grow them. Okay, so before I go on and talk about the classified salary schedule, I'm welcome to answering, I'm open to answering any questions that you might have. Yes, Jean?
I just wanted to know what the current number is of how many openings we currently have, both classified and certified? And could you break them down for me?
Yeah, so I can probably do that better departmentally and then I can pretend like I can add those up at the end. We're seeing a real, a real crisis in our classified workforce. So as far as teachers go, we have been able to continue to attract and retain quality teachers, which has been great. We have had the opportunity and the good luck of retaining good classified employees as well, but hiring them and attracting them is, is the problem. I think at this point, we have maybe between 15 and 17 custodian spots available. Are you still in? Katie, what, what do you have for food service? Is it 13? 13 or so. Am I right? Is it higher than that? 19? Yeah, and so we'll, we'll be hit with, with retirees. Transportation, Dan Gilman has been working miracles over there. But I guess I would say probably the, the easiest way to, to say it is, I bet we're probably at 75 or 80% of the workforce that we need to do our jobs well and have a robust workforce that can handle everything without the people who are currently employed undertaking heroic measures to get the job done.
So I pulled up the numbers.
Thanks, Chris.
So as of Monday morning, we had 19 custodial openings, grounds, keepers, and some head custodians. In food service, we had 13 part-time positions and one manager position. In transportation, we had 14 positions plus an additional 10 activity drivers. We had eight cafeteria recess monitors, a couple of building clerical, a bookkeeper at a high school, and three parents as teachers. And then the. And then the certified openings kind of flow kind of all over. But that's really kind of based in, we've had, let me get down to that number. We'd had 24 retirements to date, which is a hair below average, but we, we may see more retirements by the end of May. Typically, we would expect about 27. And then resignations were about 20. And then we've had a few other folks. We had an employee pass away, and then we've had some that are going out on child-rearing leave. It's just about average on the certified side, but the support side, as was explained, is significant. And it's been that way all year.
So I didn't make the connection on this while I was touring the facility, but I had the good fortune of getting a personalized tour through the Urban League today. And they have a lot of workforce development programs going on there. One of what, which was an organization, I guess it's an affiliate of the Urban League called Save Our Sons, in which they, they take kids off the street and they put them through a five-week training course. It culminates with them being prepared to find employment. They even give the kids or the adults suits to wear to their job interviews. So if you're looking for a sort of a direct source to find a diversified workforce, the Urban League might be somebody that you might consider to reach out to. Secondly, sort of changing the topics here. So how does this, the plan that you've got put forth here, what does it do to address substitute teachers? And I guess I'm specifically interested in trying to find a way to address the shortage of substitutes that we have.
Me too. First of all, thank you for the, the Save Our Sons recommendation. Secondly, with respect to subs, the good news is that in our region, we're actually doing pretty well with about an 80% fill rate. Now, objectively speaking, that's terrible, right? We want 100% coverage. I've been in this position for three years. Prior to that, I didn't do this line of work. And I've always been surprised at how hard it was to find subs and once we have substitutes, to actually, to actually encourage them or get them to, to, to work, to choose days. And we've taken action to raise sub rates from, I think, $96 to 115. For long-term subs, I think we're up at about 147. We just had a Human Resources Work Day, and we also have days set up with some of our neighboring districts to talk about what they're doing with substitutes. So it's, it's kind of a reciprocal thing. Some of the ideas that we've come up with are, in order to have our substitutes have a higher minimum day, reimburse their training after they, they, they work for five days. There are also things we can do with respect to when does long-term pay kick in or when does an enhanced rate kick in and should that be retroactive? So for instance, currently, you work 20 days consecutively and on that 21st day, you bump up to the long-term rate. We're doing feasibility studies to figure out whether we could retroactively, once you hit 20 days, give you that pay. Or if you were able to assemble 20 days in the district anywhere, would you be considered a long-term sub? We're also looking at trying to reward substitute teachers who would work a certain minimum throughout the year. So if you hit 40, 50, 60, 70 days, whatever that trigger is, then for the rest of the year, you would obtain the higher rate of pay. Those are some of the, the newer things that we are trying. We're not aware of a lot of districts who have, have found success with just one of those things. Like us, they are really trying to throw everything at the wall and see what sticks. Another issue we have is really thinking about, you know, our partnering districts. So like SSD fill rates are low right now, and how, how do we, how do we fill that as well? So I don't have one answer for you. I just know that we've been in like a continuous improvement cycle long before I started here. And, you know, by most other district standards, we are the success story. That said, I'm not pleased that 80% is, is success.
Have you considered anything related to marketing?
Yes. So we, I think, onboarded, we, we use some targeted marketing in the past couple of years, and we've been able to onboard substitute teachers in higher numbers than we have in the past. The issue is, once we've onboarded substitute teachers, we are not getting them to pick up jobs. So we might have a, a real robust pool of, of substitute teachers who have been trained and could pick up days, but we're not getting repeat teachers or teachers, you know, a lot of teachers work different, different districts or they work a job and then they sub on the side. So at least, it's more than anecdotally, we, we've noticed that it's, it's less recruitment and more about getting the days filled that we need.
Gotcha. And then is there anything related to, you know, the sense of belonging? A lot of times, I guess seasonal or part-time workers might not feel like they have a home per se. So is there anything that you might consider related to making them feel part of the team, even though they're, you know, part-time?
Yeah, I absolutely agree with that. And I think when, when Chris comes up and we talk about the MOU, we talked about that at length. And one of the questions that we addressed collaboratively as a team was, what can we do to continue to retain active quality substitutes? And, you know, we thought about things like subplans and just having more access to the building, having a better sense of what to do when you get in the building, consistency among buildings, perhaps in-person training as opposed to remote training so that they can all visualize each other and see who they are and who they may be subbing for and what the administrators look like. So those are in the works, but we are open always to suggestions. We will try it all. Yes, Jean?
Do we do any follow-up on our graduates, like from last year or the year before? Do we know what they're doing? Do we have any unemployed that, you know, that, you know, can we, can we seek any out from that?
I think that's a great idea, Jean, and what we're, what we're striving to do with respect to the Grow Your Own program is to start to track that data and develop longitudinal data to see who, if we can capture, capture them as a student employee, might continue to work for us or who might be an alum who lives locally and may need either part-time or full-time employment. I'm sorry, go ahead.
But do we actually find out what our graduates, if they have, do we have any connection there?
Yeah, and I think Chris can probably speak better, better to that.
So we're required to do a six-month follow-up? So we, we report that to the state in terms of where those graduates are. There, there's a little bit of a disconnect between trying to get recent graduates to fill substitute teaching requirements because they're, they're probably not going to meet those requirements to be a substitute teacher for somebody who's only been out of high school, maybe, maybe a year. But, and if you kind of look at our, well, at least when I, I walk around, I see a lot more younger custodians kind of serving in roles. I think that the other piece, or like a piece of especially the substitute piece, you know, as mentioned, that we've been able to recruit and have people on our sub list. And some of them don't show up for work. There's also a mechanism of they show up for work and we don't want them to come back, right? So it's not just we want bodies. We need good bodies. We, right? And we need high-quality people in our classrooms.
What other questions can I answer?
Question. Is there anything in place to do exit interviews and they're utilized, whether it's with people who are leaving or even retirees?
Yeah, so we, there's been a long-developed exit, exit interview form for classified and certified that were updated and reconfigured last, maybe last, this time last year that we put into place for all of our classified and our certified. We've summarized those and have sort of reported back to administrators and for use in our negotiations. The certified with classified, we are using that to, to, we're doing that in conjunction with evaluations to talk about like, once we get evaluations back, how employee engagement, like who's leaving and for what reason? And I will say, the, so we've been through them and we've, we've gone through them. Classified administrators are aware, or rather certified, classified is not. But some of the interesting findings, at least in my view, are that, you know, a large part of the people who responded were retiring or resigning for a reason not related to, you know, not enjoying this job, so relocation or having a child and wanting to stay home with that child. And then, not surprisingly, a number of the responses on this last year were COVID-related, you know? So COVID burnout, caring for somebody who had COVID, you know, kind of reassessing priorities in light of COVID. So they're telling in one respect because it, it does give a timestamp of where we are in the world. But with one year of this data being analyzed, I don't know that it tells the real story yet. So I think over maybe the next few years, we'll get a good sense. And so that's when panorama surveys and then also surveys that Human Resources did, we tried to fill in, we tried to ask questions that may fill in the gaps there and, and let us know like what's going on. And what we found in the classified was being under, less than sufficient staffing, you know, puts the burden on those who, who do choose to work. And, you know, we have people who work hard here, and that's, that can sometimes not be sustainable in the long haul.
Right.
So that was the real trend that we noticed with that.
Okay, okay. Thank, thank you.
Sure. Right? Okay, I don't know if I have slides for this. I guess I do. Okay, that's me. Consider the classified salary schedules for next year. And I'll move back. So you guys have copies of the, of the salary schedules. We gave you last year's for comparison and then this year's. And I can give you kind of an overview, and then I'm happy to delve into any and all areas and answer your questions. But, you know, in the past, we have not had the good fortune of having any more money than it took to raise people up to minimum wage or maybe find one group that we could target. The administration and particularly Marshall Crusher has been real instrumental in, in realizing that in the ti, in this time where we have a classified work crisis, that it's necessary to basically come up to the precipice of what we can do and do it. And so you'll see that the ask is for about $912,000. That doesn't get us to a $15 minimum wage in our district. What that does is get us hopefully custodians. That hopefully gets us crumbs who take the, take the pressure off of our administrators and teachers and allow them to do the work they need to do during recess and in lunchtime. It helps protect the ID, IT department we have, who's now on a one-to-one system, you know, all kids having Chromebooks and doing wiring and just the, the amount and the breadth of the work. The breadth and scope of work they do is, is really astounding. And then we, those were the points where we can't find people, transportation as well. And then with the money that we had left over, we continued the slow and steady raise of all the other groups. There's not a person in the classified world that's not seeing an increase, albeit modest. But our hope is that with respect to the, the places that we really need the assistance, and I'm looking at, I don't know if we've got any custodians who are in here, but Mike, you can attest to it. You know, it's painful and we'd really like to see that, see that alleviated in some sense. If we were going to think about specifics, you'll notice that on the facility's schedule, last year, we had, we had raised, you know, custodians to like $12.26. That was the best we could do. Now we've got them starting at a $14, $14 an hour rate. We think that that is a rate that will actually capture interest and will actually make our current employees feel engaged. And, you know, you can be of two minds when you're looking at a custodian job. It's one of the entry-level jobs, but it's very important. So some people choose to make a career of that, and we want them to be able to support themselves if that's their career choice. But more than that, we get great employees that come out of the custodial field who grow into new positions. And we want to keep them here as long as it takes them to realize a new area of expertise and help us in those harder-to-capture jobs, for instance, like a mechanic or a boiler maker or a carpenter, some apprentice-type job. With IT, I really respect a gentleman named Barry Rabin, who is one of the, the, one of the specialists there, along with Paul Westbrook and Paul, and Marshall. We took a year-long look at this. We had everyone identify what their job descriptions were as listed, what they, what they technically are and what they should be. And then we looked where, to, to sort of grow that department, who else would we need? So we actually added a full-time employee in that. But we sort of did some, some, we sort of righted that schedule in a way that should serve the people who are already there, aid in our retention and help us with the hiring of new employees. We also, to be really holistic, looked at how we could use student labor and intern labor and drop some of the requirements that would have prohibited student workers or interns from taking those, such as like, you know, high school diploma or availability of, of certain hours in an attempt to do a grow-your-own. Now, the only other group that's not touched right now is nurses. They are a bargaining group represented by the NEA, and we'll start those negotiations in June. But literally every other department and every role has been touched. So that's the, that's the takeaway here. And I guess I would also say, like, if we were looking, I think, I may have seen a question or it may have come up that the, kind of like a prevailing, prevailing philosophy now is like, $15 an hour sounds like a nice starting salary. You know, we've added $912,000 to this, in this ask. We would have to, I think, add $550,000 more to get us to a starting salary and then bump up like the high custodian jobs, the head groundskeepers. So this is a nice start, and the reason we could do this is because we have, you know, we've been fiscally responsible. We've got good management from the top down. And, you know, it's not just a desire. I really do think it's a necessity at this point to retain the workforce we have and hopefully recruit others. So with that said, you know, I, I'll answer any questions and then I'll respectfully ask for, for approval of this, this classified schedule as it was submitted today.
There's a lot of data here, and I'm, I'm not expecting you to sort of give me an exact answer here, but if you were to estimate, what was, what would the percentage of pay raise on average be across the board that you're suggesting?
I'd probably look to Marshall. What do you think, three?
It's, you really, and I'm going to talk about this in the budget again, but the $900,000 itself is probably like a 6% pay raise in, in itself. But you've got to understand that, you know, when you go year after year after year after year and step one remains the same, that doesn't, that doesn't work in the corporate world. It's not going to work in this world either. And there's been some nominal adjustments over the last few years to parts of the pay schedule. We can, we can never overhaul, we can never make pay adjustments in one year to every pay schedule on classified. So we would always have a little bit of money and we would try to make a little dent in a few of the job duties over the last few years. But, you know, I'll, I'll talk more in the budget on the finance dashboard and the fact that we ranked 21st out of 22nd on general spending. So, I mean, you know, it's, there's, at some point, you have to be competitive. We had, in my budget, I use 40 open positions for classified, not counting food service because they don't hit the operating funds. Doesn't mean they're not important. It's just I'm, at that point, I'm just dealing with operating funds. But I'm budgeting this year, we have 40 open positions on the classified in the operating side of full-time positions. Trying to budget to fill maybe 80% of those next year. Why do we have the open positions? You know, it's attracting, you know, recruiting, retention, market, you know, trying to get to market salaries to, you know, to recruit. And that's, we're, we're not moving, this is helpful, but I mean, this, this does not move us to average within St. Louis County. We're not going to be now having average wages in classified. This, this helps, but this is really just a start. We, we have a ways to go, and it takes a lot of money to move the needle.
I, I think it's an incredibly delicate balance.
I, I, I think it's an incredibly delicate balance. I mean, what was inflation last year, 7.1%? And we're looking at a 6% pay raise? I would, I would imagine that most other districts are probably looking at something similar to that, right?
Well, and once again, I think it just depends on where your starting point is. Uh, you know, if you're a district that has, starting higher on the ladder with your salaries, you don't have to have as big of a jump, but we were already way below average. So then you're hit with inflation. So we're having to cover inflation plus an already existing big hole. So that's where you, you can't just look at the percentage because we're starting, we're starting way, way down in a hole.
Considering, I'm sorry, one last thing real quick. Considering we're looking, we're going, we're going to consider the budget after we're looking at these pay raises, I'm assuming that this is, these numbers are something that you think are good.
Yeah, I factored, uh, I factored this into the budget. So, uh, my operating, uh, my operating gain on the operating funds right now is basically break even and that's factoring in that $900,000 pay structure.
Um, I'm glad to see the, um, increases, however minimal they are, but I never miss an opportunity to point out to everyone that we are the lowest tax rate out of 22 school districts. We collect the least. And with the least amount of money coming in out of 22 districts, I'm amazed that we can do as well as we can this year with these increases, knowing full well it's not nearly enough. But I take this piece of paper with me everywhere I go and point out to people in our area, in our district, that we do not have enough money, period. We don't have enough money. And we, we, we're going to have to just stay on our soapbox until we can make it better. But I thank you for going over all those and getting it better.
And Jean, just to follow up on that of the packet that I'm handing out and we'll be talking to, of all the pages, that is the most important page there is.
You bet it is, and that's why I take it everywhere with me.
So, um, my questions you basically answered, but I, I want to address something about the percentages. So, um, I wanted to know what the fiscal impact would be, so 912,000. And I spot checked all of them compared, and I compared, so Scott, I don't know if this was clear to you, but not every staff, I mean, not every employee is getting 6% to 7%. I mean, it's very random.
Correct.
And you explained that in the, um, the set, in your first presentation, that the salary study you, you implemented pushing more and more money where it's needed to even keep and retain the people. So anyway, I just wanted to make sure you understood, I mean, there are some as low as under 1% and some as high as like 17%, like in the tech department, which I totally agree with her, we're just going to lose them and have to train them all over again. But anyway, thank you for the explanation and all the details. And if anybody wants to know the percentages, I ran all of them. So, thank you. Grace?
Yeah. I just have, uh, one thing to say. Not everybody knows that we do a great job of promoting from within and that leaves a lot of empty seats open. So this is something that we need to do to attract, uh, more staff to come in and fill those positions. So it's doing kind of a double duty here.
In the future, is there any rationale to not having 16 steps for certain positions?
Uh, just like with subs, everything's on the table. Um, it's a, it's slow and steady, it seems to be the, the way that things have worked here. And I think, um, to the betterment of our workforce, we have been in the process of, shrinking and compressing schedules. And I know that Marshall and the Finance Committee and administrators, we've talked about, you know, what are the most, um, what are some of the more progressive ways that we can pay people? What does that look like? Um, so again, we're open to suggestions. Yeah, ideally we'd love to have, you know, fewer steps or fewer salary schedules. Um, you know, it's one foot, one foot in front of the other, one step at a time here.
I mean, I think in some positions, if you're on the job for five years, you're probably considered an expert.
Correct.
And this takes 16 years to be paid at the expert level.
Yes.
If I can get a motion to approve all classified salary schedules for the 2022-2023 school year as presented.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion passes 7-0.
Thanks, thanks so much. Okay, next on the agenda is, um, the MOU conversation. We've got the teacher MOU for the 2022-2023 school year up and I'm going to, um, ask Dr. Bressler and Chris Tice to go ahead and, uh, tell you what we did this year.
So earlier this evening before the board meeting, we got notified by, um, NEA that their membership officially ratified, uh, this evening. Uh, we finished negotiations, um, was it early last week, I think? Wednesday of last week, um, and, um, our teachers ratified this evening with approval. So in turn with pride tonight, we're seeking approval from our Board of Education. So beginning in February, it's been three months, um, many hours, countless hours have been spent, not by a small group of people, but, um, by two different teams, our district team, board-appointed team, as well as, um, our teacher leadership team. The board-appointed district team consisted of, um, Human Resources, Ms. Hanson, who spoke this evening, um, about the process a little bit, um, as well as two principals, uh, this year, Ms. Andrea Dean from Beasley Elementary, as well as Greg Ruzika from Melva High School, who are our principal representatives, and then also three central office members, um, Dr. De Kemper, um, from his lens, as well as Dr. Smith, um, from his lens, and then myself. So that, that's the group that comprised our district team. And our teacher team, uh, was Chris Owen, which is the NEA Unit Serv Director, and the chief negotiator for the teachers, uh, Mr. Chris Tice, who's joining us tonight as well. Um, and they had four teachers, uh, join as well, um, from elementary, representatives, elementary, middle school, high school. Alma Hachek, um, is from Rogers, Ms. Mary Bear from Ford Elementary and Bridget Kelly from Oakville, uh, Middle School. So the time commitment is one thing, um, but we made a lot of progress and I would definitely say that this year was a win-win. Um, and I wouldn't even consider this, um, time we spent together as two different teams. We really became one, um, because we focus on specific things. Number one, it was so important for us to, to have collaboration as our focus. Um, obviously gives us better information versus just storytelling and, and observations, but real information to help us solve problems and solve issues. And then also we wanted to, to make sure that we left the season, um, with better relationship, uh, with our teachers as well as with the district. And then also that trust, um, so that we can actually put what's on paper into action, uh, for our students. Keeping our focus on supporting level of school district goals was really important to us too. Many times throughout the process, we pulled up our strategic plan. How does what we're talking about relate to our strategic plan? Are we in line with what our goals are for level school district as well as our strategic plan? Mr. Tice, would you like to go over anything that you wanted to add, um, as a teacher representative on the group?
Sorry, putting you on the spot. Oh, no problem. Uh, yes, I'd like to go, uh, second what Dr. Bressler said, as far as the collaboration goes. Um, we spent approximately 70 hours in central office, both our teams, and, uh, we built, um, on pride in the workforce, trying to retain quality teachers, which is so important. And, uh, we focused on several things from whether that was Teacher of the Year and building that recognition, um, National Board Certification, getting more of those, uh, for our district, and then, um, competitive pay. It's always, um, an issue. Um, but this year we were able to, to fix some of the problems of the past and build pride in our workforce and hopefully retain some of those teachers, um, with the Step Recovery Program. Been an issue for a long time.
So as Mr. Tice said, that Step Recovery, that's that main, um, our salary goal. Um, what came from our teachers, from our educators, um, we've had some years of frozen steps. So our teachers, um, staff, I should say, district-wide, um, have endorsed freezes, prior freezes. So that was one of the things that were at our forefront, that we wanted to figure out, um, how we could help rectify that. I know that, you know, that's something that was prior to us being on that team or prior to our board sitting here, um, prior actually to any of the decisions. I remember Dr. Gaines coming and to our district after about three freezes and said he's never had to do that. So I'm glad we're sticking to that. Um, so we do have a frozen restoration plan so that through these coming years, we'll be able to restore, uh, through, um, those additional steps that's more sustainable and, uh, that will meet our budget. We also, eh, on our team had specific individuals that come and give us more information. Uh, specifically, Mr. Crutcher will come in and meet with us, talk to us a little bit about budget, um, and his, his focus, his goals and where we're moving forward. Also through this, we had things that would, uh, sort of gave us homework. We recognized that next year we need to really work on, um, our ACS contracts or our contracts for athletics, um, as well activities. How progressive are we in relation to other districts? So we put some to-dos on our list this year, um, so that we can move forward in those areas such as ACS contracts, as well as having more conversation around, uh, calculating, um, our school year, our school days based on hours, uh, versus days moving forward. So we have a couple of items that we have as, um, things that we agreed that we are going to work on, uh, before, uh, we start the season next year. Any other details? Jen sort of mentioned, as she was presenting in her previous ones, a lot about some of those, um, competitive salaries. So, uh, but I do want to thank honestly both teams, the countless hours, I didn't count how many, uh, but when he said 70, I do want to tell you that those 70 hours are hours spent outside of the school day. Those were not done, um, during school days, those were after-school hours. So we are thankful to our teachers for putting in those hours, um, not just for the working conditions and benefits of our employees, um, and our teaching staff, but truly the, the people that, you know, this impacts the most important investment that we have in our district, which is, which is obviously our, our students. So that being said, you have before you, um, our agreed-upon MOU that we are looking to seek approval on this evening.
I had a really quick just statement, kind of like what Jean did with the last time, just kind of saying something out loud and giving people an opportunity to hear it if they're watching. Um, part of what happens after you're elected as a board member is you learn a lot. So I, I was a student in the district, um, I graduated in 2015 and just hearing about frozen steps. And I was under the impression that unfortunately it happened a few times, that this was commonplace, that this maybe happened everywhere and it was just a normal part of just things that happened. And I didn't realize and a part of the education I got was, these things really aren't necessarily commonplace in that our teachers have been extremely loyal to us and stuck with us through these frozen steps and that our recovery program is not, I don't want to say unique, but it was necessary and I'm glad to see that both groups could get there. And then I just wanted to say specifically to the working hours, 70 seems low. I honestly thought it would be way more. Um, I appreciate both groups. There was a day where I know Peggy and Tori were up here, um, and then Scott and Grace were doing new board member training. I was watching a water polo game. I went to go get Chick-fil-A and then I watched a volleyball game with Scott after he was done. And I remember getting there at like 3:30, you guys were in the office working and negotiating. And then when I got food, I was like, oh, they're still in there. Then I went to the game and the game got over at like, I don't know, s- 6:30, 7 o'clock and you guys were still in there. So again, I appreciate all that work. I know it's tough sometimes, but again, it's a volunteer force and you guys all came together and did a great job, so.
Maybe need to work on being more effective and efficient with our time at times, but we did, um, enjoy parts of those 70 hours.
I, um, did notice this afternoon when we got the MOU to review, uh, the, that you have, uh, that you're going to task them with doing the ACS contracts. And I'm glad to see that because I've mentioned it several times in the past few years that I thought it was skewed in the wrong direction. Um, could you just briefly tell me hourly versus, how, how, what's the calendar situation? How many hours is it, is, are we required by hours and then?
I'll get it.
Sorry, I should know this probably.
Uh, Brian on our team, that was one of his topics. I don't want to speak over him, but Chris may have some more information than.
So for many, 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 many years, the requirement from the state was both 1,044 hours as a minimum, as well as 174 days of attendance. That changed when, um, the state began allowing four-day school weeks. And then so it was 1,044 hours and a minimum 142 school days. However, if you look at the historical data, um, even with the minimum of 1,044, the state average was 1,100. We're right around that 1,100 mark, a little bit more. So most recently, the day piece has been removed, the 174. So when the, when the four-day week was there, it was the 142 days and the hours or the 174 and the 1,044. And then finally they dropped the 174 day requirement. So you look across Missouri and, and today you will see schools from around that 142 mark up to 180, just across the state. So it really, really varies, uh, but the hour piece does provide kind of a new dynamic that begins to be a challenge to how we explore that because, um, historically, um, in recent years, the board has been, um, very adamant about trying to increase instructional time, if at all possible. Um, so we don't want to go the other way with that, as well as days.
All right, thank you. And I also want to comment and thank you guys for being so, such a class act. I mean, that's the fact that you're able to all come here and present to us and everything seems to have gone well. I appreciate, uh, the classiness of it, so thank you. Anybody else? Okay. If I can get a motion to approve the teacher MOU for the 2022-2023 school year as presented.
So moved.
Patrick. Sorry. He got it.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes 7-0. Marshall with Budget Development.
All right, this is the first look at really a full budget, or at least, uh, full revenues and expenses to where we get a net gain or loss. So I've got a handout that I've passed out, which will be much more helpful for you guys to look at the handout because it's got more information. You can't really fit all of the notes and make it readable on the screen. So we're going to spend most of the time on the first page, this budget overview page, page one. And we start off at the top, you'll see operating fund, gain or loss. Current year forecast right now is a loss of $479,000. And the budget column shows $38,000 positive gain. And it says, see note two. So basically note two just goes on to explain how we get to that break even because what it basically says in note two is, we initially, when we put the budget together, we initially calculated about a 3.5 million net loss to the operating funds. And once again, what's an operating fund? That's your everyday normal expenses. So how did we turn the 3.5 million dollar loss into more of a break even? So how did we turn the $3.5 million loss into more of a break even? It says $38,000 net gain, but for practical purposes, that's basically zero. It's net, you know, break even. So what we did was initially, a year ago, we had COP money free of 45 cent tax levy that was about $9.8 million. We used a little bit of that to pay off our new general obligation bond debt. But the rest of it, we had like a seven-year plan where we would initially use a lot of it to put in the capital funds and stow it away and use a little bit in the general funds. And then every year, increase the amount used for general and decrease the amount used for capital. Well, with these deficits, and the reason we had deficits, there's many reasons. Revenue stagnation from the state, we've got inflation. We had the reset of the tax rates statewide, statewide lawsuit. Many reasons why we had more unexpected net loss than we anticipated a year ago. So to cover that $3.5 million net loss, the original plan for that COP money for this next year, fiscal year '23, was to basically move $5.3 million out of the general fund and move it into the capital fund. Well, we revised that plan and now we're only moving $1,550,000 into the capital fund, which is about $3.5 million less than what we had planned on moving. So that provides $3.5 million more for the general operating fund than initially we had planned. So what that means is we're, we're taking money from that COP allocation a lot faster than what we planned a year ago. So by decreasing that COP reallocation by $3.5 million, it moved that net loss to basically a break even. And that's explained in Note 2. And just so that, you know, it's important for you guys to understand, you don't have to understand every single detail in the financials, but just to make sure you understand some of the key points. It goes on in Note 4 on that page to sort of break down the mechanics of how we do that. So just to try to make it a fairly simple overview, when we're moving that $5.3 million of COP money over to the capital fund, we do it two mechanical ways. We do part of it through a transfer and we do part of it through just a straight tax levy to the capital fund. You can, you can levy, you know, your monies to different funds and it's just instead of levying that portion to the general fund, we were going to levy that to the capital fund. Why not just transfer the whole thing? Well, there's compliance restrictions of what, how much DESI allows you to move out of your general fund through transfers. There's no restriction on levying, you know, between the funds. You can levy more to general or levy more to capital and do whatever you want on that. But you can't transfer more than a certain amount. So that's why part of that was broken up to move part of that $5.3 million through a transfer and part of it through the levy. So all we did was we basically reduced that levy down to zero, which reduced it by 2.9 million. And then we reduced the transfer by $700,000. So that's how we reduce from $5.3 million down to $1,550,000. I know that's a little technical, but if you read through the footnotes, it might make a little more sense. If not, you can always call me. So that's the overview on the operating funds. And then if you go back up to the top of Page 1 and look at non-operating net gain or loss, you'll see that for fiscal year '23 column, you'll see a net loss of like $13 million. So that's why it's very important to differentiate between operating funds and non-operating funds. The non-operating funds are, you know, once again, it's equivalent to your household budget, like, you know, doing a roof, new roof, new windows, new carpet, things like that. Well, the reason it's a loss is we received the $37 million back at the end of fiscal year '21. It's already in the bank and now we're just spending it on the capital projects. So for that particular year, fiscal year '23, it shows up as a loss, but it's money in the bank. It's money that we've already got in the bank and now we're spending it down for our Prop S projects. So it shows a loss, but it's not alarming or concerning, it's not a problem. And that's explained in Note 3 on Page 1. So with that overview, you can see how, if you go to Page 2 on my handout, really the second tier of boxes all the way over to the right, you'll see a net gain-loss little box. You'll see where that operating shows a net loss of $479,000. That's the exact same number that was on Page 1 for the fiscal year '22 forecast. And if you go to the next page, Page 3A, and you look at that same area of the net gain-loss in that second tier of boxes all the way over to the right, the operating loss there shows $3,465,000. That's the loss that we initially had before we revised the COP allocation plan. After we revised that COP allocation plan, if you go to Page 3B, you'll see that that same number has now changed to a $38,000 gain. If you go to Page 4, you'll see this is the revised COP allocation plan now. And on Page 4, you'll see a box that's got fiscal year '23 in it. If you go over to the column that says levy to the capital fund, it's zero. The year before, in this current year, fiscal year '22, it shows $3,827,000 was levied to the capital fund. But in fiscal year '23 now, we revised that to be zero. And the transfer, the very next column over, transfer to capital fund. In fiscal year '22, we transferred $2,250,000. Now we're transferring $700,000 less, $1,550,000. So this is now the current plan. But to compare what the original plan was, go to Page 5. And this was the plan that was initially put together before we had all these changes that I talked about. You see that levy to the capital fund column. You'll see where in fiscal year '23, we initially were planning on levying $3,450,000 to the capital fund. And right next to it, we're going to transfer $2,250,000. The sum of that is $5.3 million. And every year, you can see that the capital funds in those two columns, one or both of those columns decreases every year and it goes through fiscal year '28. And you'll see down, right below the total column, you'll see a note that says total additions to the capital fund. Over those seven years, we're going to put $23 million in the capital funds to help cover for future HBDC. But if you flip, flip back to Page 4 and look to see what those total additions are now, it's only $8 million. And that's the impact of revising that COP reallocation plan. We were over seven years, we were going to put away $23 million. Now it's going to be only $8 million because we need these funds to cover the operating losses. And then to Gene, and my favorite page, Page 6, get to the finance dashboard. And basically, that really backs up. If you go to Page 1, the budget overview, the budget overview, go back to Page 1. If you work your way down below the revenue and expense section, you'll see finance dashboard section on Page 1 and the rankings out of 22 St. Louis County districts. So you'll see on Page 1 there, it says that the tax rate, $3.65, that's last place out of 22. The operating expense per student of $10,082 per student, that's next to last. And then the debt per student, which is your investments of infrastructures like what Prop S is doing, that's in last place also. Well, that's all found in the dashboard on, you know, that we just talked about and then Gene had pointed out. And when you look at the Note 1 that goes along with this, on Note 1 on Page 1, it just talks about how Melville is the fourth-largest district in St. Louis County. Rockwood, Parkway and Hazelwood are all the larger districts and they all have higher tax rates. And Rockwood and Parkway also have similar or higher values. Hazelwood property values are not as high, but Rockwood and Parkway are as high or higher. And that if Melville matched the Rockwood tax rate of, it would be 46 cents higher or produce $9.8 million more per year in revenue. If we matched the Parkway rate, it would be 34 cents higher and would produce $7.2 million more revenue per year. So we're on the bottom and as the note says, that the tax revenue has to be increased or else major cuts will be needed at some point in the future. And I'd say more in the near future. So you go back to, you know, the dashboard on Page 6 and that supports, you know, the notes. Note 1, talking about the tax rates and all of the parameters. So then on your handout, if you just flip back to the revenue section, real briefly on Page 1, we've talked about this in the past, so just a real quick overview on that. The revenue basically has somewhat stagnated because local taxes are number one. Revenue source, it's a, next year is a rea, is a non-reassessment year. So even though we've got inflation, we will not have higher property values. It will be producing additional revenue. So it's, there won't be additional revenue on that since it's non-reassessment. Basic formula stagnates because DESI at this point is planning on the same state adequacy target of 6375. So that remains the same, that stagnates. So in general, you know, we've got inflation, but our key revenues are not really growing. And then when you turn to the expense section, you go to Page 1, a few pages back on the expense. And just looking at that, the fiscal year '23 budget, it shows a total of $145,279. That's an increase of $16.2 million. But once again, it's a little misleading because the majority of that is the increased capital spending for Prop S projects. So of that $16 million expense increase, really only $6.3 million of that is the operating funds. So of the $6.3 million of operating fund increases, 5.9 of that is for salaries and benefits. Of the 5.9 million salaries and benefits, 4 million of that is salaries. And on the benefit side, you've got 1.1 million that's related just to health insurance rate increases. On the $4 million of salaries, about half of that is for certified, about half of that is for classified. We've talked about the MOU on the certified. We've talked some about the pay rate changes to the classified. I think on the classified, you really have to break that down and dissect it in a number of parts. We talked about the open positions earlier. My budget shows on the operating fund side, full-time, full-time positions that are open. A little bit earlier this spring, we had 40 positions open. If we fill just 80% of those, it would cost around an additional $750,000 in salary alone. So of the increase that you're seeing in next year's budget, $750,000 of that is just to restore back to a normal operating position. We've got $110,000 for two staff, IT staff and a boiler room tech, which are, both of those are critical with the growth that the district has had over the last few years. $67,000 of that is ESSER funded. So it shows as a salary increase, but there's an offsetting revenue increase. So it really is a net zero cost, even though it shows up as part of a salary increase. You've got $49,000 for 3.5% raises to admin staff. You've got $293,000 increase for one step, which is a 2% raise for the staff. And then you've got the $900,000 rate increase, which is about 6%. So when you look at district-wide and you look at all of the salaries in, in total, the salaries increase district-wide across the board 5.3%. But if you just take away the open positions of classified and pretend like we already had those positions filled, which normally we should have those filled, that takes your increase down from $4 million salary increase to $3,250,000. That $3,250,000 would then be a 4.3% salary increase. So I would argue, under normalized situations, the true district-wide salary increase is more like 4.3% for a district that's already below average in salary and is also fighting against inflation. So that's why it's important to dissect these parts carefully because if you just look at certain numbers in certain ways, it looks like a very significant increase. And, and the other comment, I would say, you know, in the, in the business world, if you're fighting with deficits, you know, your first reaction is, well, you know, we can't have, we can't have big raises. We can't, can't have these increases. But when you look at the dashboard and you rank 21st, what are we shooting for, 25th? I mean, there's only 22 districts and there's only so low you can go. So when you're already below average on salaries, whether you have a deficit or not, at this point, if you're going to retain and attract on both sides, certified and classified, you have to have changes to your pay structure regardless of deficits or not. So, you know, and that's why, Gene, you couldn't have said it any better. I think, you know, I, I, you took the words right out of my mouth. If you're going to take one page out of this whole packet, you should take the finance dashboard and you should carry it around every day because that tells the whole story. So that's really what I've got tonight. Any questions?
We're 11th according to your dashboard on cash reserves. Is that where you want us to be?
I think the cash reserves are one place where we, we have some really good adequate reserves now. We've spent a number of years building those reserves. And one of the benefits of having it, we don't need them to be higher. We certainly don't want it to be tremendously lower. But we're in a good position on cash reserve because the, when we moved into 2020 spring and COVID was hitting, at one point, we were uncertain state funding and the ball moving all over the place on the budget for the following year. When we were going through April, May and June, at one point, we had a $6.5 million budget deficit staring at us before the state came through and made a few changes with their funding, which I think then took it down to 4.5 million or 4 million. But when we were facing a $6 million deficit, we never once had to talk about making immediate emergency cuts because we had very good cash reserves. So I think that's the benefit that the finance committee and myself would tell you that it's nice to have some cash reserves. Do we need, you know, greater, do we need to get to 40? No, we don't. But do we want to just purposefully burn that down real quick? No, we don't want to do that either.
So it's, I mean, given our, given our circumstance, it's, it feels appropriate to you?
I, I think the finance committee and I will both tell you that we want to avoid burning it quickly. I think we, you know, if you, if you burn a million or two that, and, and you have a slow short window of time of decreases, that's not going to be real damaging. But you don't want to be burning five or $6 million a year because in no time at all, you'll be, it takes a long time to build that back up.
Okay, so obviously, I'm just becoming accustomed to looking at school finances. So forgive me if this is a beginner-level question. So you pointed out the levy to capital funds and the transfer to capital funds and how it's decreasing from FY '22 to FY '23. Is that, is that, that's the essence of the numbers that we're, that we're looking at in terms of our reality? Is that right, how those numbers are decreasing in FY '23?
Yeah, I was talking about the COP reallocation plan?
Yes.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, we had, you know, initially, we had a seven-year plan to basically just increase that coming into the general fund about a million dollars a year so that that would help sort of sup- would help sort of supplement general funding seven years in a row. But now to cover that deficit, we're, we're pulling $3.5 million additional out of that cop money that would have gone to capital that now is going just to cover the deficit.
Okay. You mentioned also, major cuts at some point in the future. When and how much?
I think it depends on, in, in general, it's going to depend on a number of things. It's going to depend on how fast people want to burn the cash reserve. It's going to depend on, we do have an assessment year coming up two years from now with probably still inflation that's going to allow, you know, some degree of a nice tax, you know, tax revenue increase, even though the tax rate would be the same. So a lot of it depends on those factors. But I would say, I mean, like I, I think the main thing, the finance committee and I both are going to advise that you don't get into a situation where you're burning four or $5 million a year because that will go very, very quick. So I would say maybe you get by with a year or two. It, it just depends. But once you start getting into more than like one or $2 million of deficit, because that stuff, it, it keeps exponentially increasing. You know, if you have a $3 million deficit this year, and then you're going to give raises because we're not done on classified, we're not done on certified, we've still got to give sort of some catch up raises. So if you're $3 million this year, what are you going to be at next year? $6 million? So you got to be careful about that accelerating. And that's the danger. It's not just, do we have $3 million or so to, to burn this year? Yeah, you might. But then do you want that $3 million to turn into $6 or $7 million the next year? Because man, it can, it can go quick.
Okay.
So I'll try to nail down that a little bit more. So our budget, I always describe a school budget as budgets within a budget. It's an overall budget, but within all of that, we've got a food service budget that's treated, that's actually the only part of the school that's treated like a business year over year. So the long held micro budgets that are easiest to explain are the federal title budgets. So we get X number of dollars in Title I. So we'll just use million dollars, for example. So we'll set expenses equal to a million dollars. So we'll just make revenue and expenses equal so there's no net impact on the budget by the Title I revenue and expenditures. So we have other programs that are like, other federal title programs that are like that. Early childhood program, although we, we do have to contribute a little bit to that. So it's not completely revenue and expense neutral. And the big thing, and you heard this in the building level reports, are these ESR funds that we're spending down over the next few years. So that again is a budget within a budget. So when you think about cuts, the first cuts are going to be when those revenues stop. So for all intensive purposes, it's a three year window that we're spending those down. So this year FY '22, next year FY '23, and then FY '24. So that revenue is going to go away for FY '25. So all of the positions and programs funded will have to go away. Or we can choose to absorb that cost, which will be significant. So that's kind of the first piece that's going to fall in line with some level of cuts with a definitive timeline.
Okay. So, I'm sorry, go ahead.
As I said, the, the other thing is, you know, there's budget and then there's cash flow. And as one of the things that we have to be mindful of as we spend down the balances is our balances are the amount of money that we have on June 30th and July 1. But we're cash flow negative 10, nine or 10 months out of the year, depending on when the last payroll falls. So we're cash flow negative up through the end of November until we get those first tax checks in December. So we need to have enough cash to get us to that point or we're just going to be borrowing and have to pay interest on those dollars. So essentially, we're cash flow positive in December and January for sure. And then either in May or June, depending on when that last payroll really hits us. So that's part of why we have to have balances as well.
So one strategy, and correct me if I'm wrong, is to replace the revenue that we're going to lose because of the ESR funds because those expenditures are directly impacting the educational performance of the district and the education that kids are receiving. Is that correct?
So the ESR funds were, are primary for learning recovery. They have some other allowable expenses. And when we presented our initial ESR plan roughly a year ago, about 80% of our use of ESR funds would fall into what we would consider learning recovery.
Okay. Outside of, I guess, I don't know if we have teacher vacan- I know we've got some teacher vacancies. I don't know if it's a systemic problem, but I know that you said that we've got several problems or several open positions that we haven't filled yet. Have those open positions, have they negatively impacted the quality of education that the kids have received? I guess where I'm going with this, is there, is there, is there, is there any way, do we have any means for natural attrition to sort of proactively tighten our, our belt before we see these problems happening next year or the year after? Do we, do we have to fill all of those positions that are open?
For the most part, it's a, it's a little bit yes, it's a little bit no. I mean, for several years, we've not filled all of the vacancies we necessarily have or, you know, we'll move FTEs around and we'll cut, you know, maybe one, one teacher position, teaching position or maybe some, another position. As we look moving from this year to next year, as of right now, we don't anticipate reducing any FTE. How that might look in the years beyond that, it's a little bit hard to tell. Part of that depends on our enrollment number kind of overall, but it also depends on what our student population looks like. Because one of the things that's impacting us and has kind of made us think about how we shift what we would normally think about eliminating or reducing an FTE is since the start of school, we've had over 150 immigrants move in. So some of those FTEs are shifting over to supports for new students and, and, you know, EL supports for students around the district. So it's kind of this big moving puzzle all the time. And when we feel like we've got room to take pieces off and reduce costs, we definitely do that.
Okay. So basically, there's not a lot of leeway for reduced spending that will not negatively impact the quality of education that the kids receive.
Bulk of our budget is people.
And just to clarify that, Scott, note five, I believe it is, on page one of that budget overview, basically what it does, it, it talks a little bit about the ESR budget. All of the expenses are offset by our revenues. So there's, there's a net zero gain or loss on that. So to Dr. Gaines' point, once that funding ends, there will be cuts to that, which does affect the education part. But the cuts that I refer to in that footnote are not even related to ESR. There will be other cuts besides ESR because as you can see, with, with ESR balancing out to net zero, we still had a $3.5 million deficit this year until we pulled over cop funds. Those cop funds are virtually gone. There's very little to pull over next year. So the deficits are going to rear its ugly head again the following year unless we get a huge tax revenue from, you know, inflation and a reassessment of values, which, you know, it's possible that we could get a decent injection. You don't know what the state's going to do the following year. That's why it's a little uncertain from year to year because you don't know. But if we don't get that, aside from ESR, we'll have to start assessing how much deficit do we have? Are we comfortable with burning it that year? And when do the cuts want to kick in? Do you want that year, the next year? You know, how soon do you want to start that? Because, you know, like I said, if you let it get very big, the momentum on that is, how much do you want to shock the system? I think if, you know, the, our finance committee meeting that we had this last meeting, they were pretty adamant about, they felt like there was a very strong need to go out next spring with a ballot and do something to raise revenue.
I'm not necessarily opposed to that. I'm just looking at that, that there's a lot of economic uncertainty and I want us to be efficient with making requests like that and finding the appropriate time to do it. And I'm not saying next year is not the time. I'm just saying that, but the, the economy shrank this first quarter. If it, if it shrinks in quarter two, we are officially in recession, I think. Is that correct? I mean, we just need to keep that in mind. If we're in recession, we've got a, we've got a, we've got a pretty big hurdle in front of us.
Well, I would just say, look at the dashboard. Whether we're in recession or not, 21st is 21st and 22nd is 22nd.
Yep. I, I mean, I agree. I agree. I'm just, all I'm saying is that I think there's a, the timing is, of this is important, is an important consideration.
Dr. Smith?
Good evening. Usually curriculum revisions come to you either in December or January. This one, our K through five social studies team just took a little bit longer to be able to work through. And so that's, the purpose behind a curriculum revision is to take a look at what our previous, in this particular case, our elementary curriculum revision occurred. In this case, last time that a social studies elementary revision occurred, occurred during the 2014, 2015 school year. So since then, which was eight years ago at this point in time, the state has moved away from the grade level expectations, the GLEs that covered K through eight, as well as the course level expectations that covered grades nine through 12, and moved to the Missouri learning standards. So that in essence is the primary reason for tonight's curriculum revision. We are, go undergoing and finishing up our overall writing of curriculum as well as adoption of a resource to help support our students in grades K through five. With regards to the process overall, it's also pretty standard. English, math, science, social studies, art, music and PE all undergo the same process at the elementary level. And so, you know, annually you will see, depending on where we're at with regards to our curriculum cycle, you will see, you know, the curriculum team submitting particular documents. So this is a pretty standard procedure. But I would take any questions that you may have specific to K through five social studies.
I just have one comment. As I was reading through it, I know that it's very similar to the, the DESI curriculum that's online and that's awesome. And I think that it has a lot of great content. One thing that I was just concerned with when I was reading through the kindergarten one is I do understand that children need to relate to things personally, but since we do have a lot of, of refugee families in the area, I think that it would be good to have the teachers have sort of a training on the trauma informed practices for relating to their culture if they just left something that was traumatic. So that was the only comment I had.
Sure. It's a good point. You know, with regards to the curriculum process, there is a difference so that everybody's clear between the what versus the how. Really what this is about and what with regards to the documents you had attached to your board agenda is more about the what, the specific content. Getting into the how, the instructional practices and strategies that are used in our classroom, the how of that is certainly very important. And that is part of the reason why the committee took a little bit longer, to be honest with you, was to have good conversations about, you know, formative and summative assessments and ensuring that the documentation that we had in place with regards to how we able to assess students was consistent as well as making sure that it, there was no, there was no intent for any particular bias or to recognize kids wherever they're coming from, that we take them where they're at and then we move them forward. So I do understand that point though.
I was happy with it though. I thought it was great other than that, just one little tiny thing.
Sure.
Thank you.
We have tried in terms of the updating, and you'll continue to see this moving forward. You should see better alignment, especially within our course objectives, specifically citing this, in this particular case, it 100% aligns with the Missouri learning standards and it aligns with the power standards the district chooses. There's certainly more curriculum as part of the overall kindergarten through fifth grade, social studies curriculum than what we can ever list because there's way more standards than, you know, big standards and small standards. The goal is to teach the Missouri learning standards and use that as a framework and as a guide for our education.
Grace, I think that was a great point. Thank you. Yes.
We try to be very cognizant of who we teach and how we teach them. Most importantly, it's also important to know what we're teaching them. So I think this one would require a motion specifically.
Okay. If I can get a motion to adopt the curriculum revisions as presented?
So moved?
Second.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes 7-0. Grace?
Thank you.
Got a little bit of a PropS update. So start by backtracking. The board has approved bids for some summer projects that do fall within the PropS funding scheme. These three projects amount to about 2.3 million in work that we'll be doing at these three locations this year. We have also kind of moved forward. We've got the OES parking lot bid, that bid was around 1.6 million. This one, it's the county permits, we continue to struggle. You will recall all of the land reconfiguration that we've had to go through because of the existing site was owned by four entities. So not only has that impacted the parking lot piece, but it's started to impact the security entrance too, because the land piece needs to be figured out before all of that. So that has been a bit of a frustration. The OHS entrance and restroom renovation, the board approved, accepted a bid last week or two weeks ago on that. That project is just under three quarters of a million. We're slated to plan, to start after Memorial Day, really on both of those. However, if we're able to get a little bit earlier start at OHS on the stadium restrooms, which it looks like that's probably going to be the case, although it may only be a few days, and hopefully we can get into demolishing the house and start tearing out the trees on that Oakville Elementary site. The board tonight accepted a bid from Blades. We still do have to, it, it's going to be a little bit more disruptive to access the building than we initially thought. But Dr. DeKemper has met with Dr. Booker. So we think we've got kind of a first stage plan and has met with Dr. Booker, so we think we've got kind of a first stage plan and kind of how we can kind of work through that. We have bid Rogers, OES, and Bernard, those security entrances, as well as kind of the, kind of safety parking piece at Rogers. We're doing background checks on low bidders, had a conversation with them today. Likely we'll embed that bid with May 10th and a listening session focus group meeting so that we can get them moving forward with those projects. We are hearing lead time concerns on some materials, doors, and storefronts to some extent. So altogether, you know, once we get these bids through us, that'll be roughly 8.3 million or so of work that will be starting the summer and then will run into next school year. Beer bomb bids are going to be due in just a couple of weeks as well. I would define it as, you know, we're seeing some bidders back out or some contractors say they're not going to submit a bid. There are, people are busy and they're not looking for as much work is kind of what we're hearing. But once we get those bids, we'll kind of analyze where we think we need to head. So possibly getting those bids to the board in June. And again, that'll be another sizable project that will be going next year and will be a considerable disruption to the functioning of beer bomb. In order to do that security entrance, they will lose their office, they will lose their nurse's office, and they will lose two classrooms during that construction. So we'll be moving a lot of things around in the building and early childhood, the early childhood classroom that is there will move to Trout Line during the construction. So all of this and the action that the board took two weeks ago has kind of impacted our timelines a little bit. So here's what we have kind of at the latest. We'll have a couple of projects or a couple of bid packages that'll be bidding in early '23, we think. Then the beer bomb phase two will come after that. Melville High School shortly after that. Then lastly, Beasley and John Kerry. And then we've moved Point into that package with Wollin and Oakville Middle with the fire zone issues that we've had. And then we'll also have a bunch of projects that we'll be bidding next winter. That will be kind of the smaller summer projects, kind of stuff where we try to get it done during the summer. So we've got some roof work as well as work on HVAC at John Kerry and then a very sizable HVAC project here in this building. So one of the things that, you know, has been, has been a question is around the construction management action that the board took two weeks ago. We're kind of following board policy kind of as we move through that process, which is a little bit lengthy. But we've also had, as we've kind of done research and talked to other districts to get some sample work that we can use as a kind of templates, just the notion of whether or not we would do an outside company versus hiring an individual to kind of be our in-house owner rep on construction projects. We've talked to a couple of districts that have moved from the outside to the more in-house. That's been a little bit more cost efficient for them. So that may be something to consider. And then lastly, here's where we sit on finances. So when you think about the impact on the budget as a overall and the numbers that you saw not long ago, that significant spin down or that overall deficit, right? So before the beer bomb bid, we're anticipating that we're going to spend 8.3 out of this kind of pot or bucket or, you know, silo of funds. And that revenue was received in FY '21, but we're going to realize this big expense in FY '23. And we'll have more in FY '24 and probably just a little bit left for FY '25. So that's kind of where we are with Prop S things today. We continue to have regular meetings with our architects and engineers and we'll have additional meetings with contractors once they start kicking up and moving. Pretty much looks like Tuesday mornings right now are our construction meeting times. With that, we'll attempt to answer any questions that you may have.
I just have a question about the Oakville High School stadium restrooms. So starting that, you said May 31st, there's, there would probably be an overlap with sports camps and things that go on there. Is there, I guess you guys already have a plan in place on how to?
Go inside.
Yeah, yeah. But there'll be access to that. Right. Yeah.
Yeah. The, the inside, the kind of the gym lobby restrooms will be available.
Perfect.
Now we're moving on to action items by consent. Does anybody need to pull anything?
I think we need to pull the meeting minutes for the 17th of March and the 6th of April for obvious reasons and then just do them separately.
Okay.
Since Grace and Scott weren't on the board at that point, we have to vote on them separately.
Right.
They have to abstain on those two votes and then we vote the, we vote the 14th from the previous meeting altogether.
Okay. So if I can get a motion to approve action items B through H? So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes seven zero. So now we have to make a motion to approve the minutes of the March 17th regular meeting and the April 6th, 2022 special meeting and the...
Just those two.
And that's all. Sorry. If I could get a motion for the March 17th and April 6th?
So moved. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
You need, who, I know we need you to abstain.
Oh, I, I meant I abstained.
Because you weren't at the meeting.
I abstained.
Okay.
I abstained.
Okay. I have two abstains, Grace and Scott, and five...
Ayes.
Yays.
Scott, two eager.
No, right. Now I need to...
Lucky mistake.
Now, this time you guys can vote.
You get to do it this time.
If I can get a motion to approve the April 14th board reorganization meeting of the Melville Board of Education as presented?
So moved. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes seven zero. Thank you, Jeff, for making that clear. Okay. Moving on to communications. If anybody has any standing committee reports they'd like to share?
It was on the finance committee meeting we had last week and it was basically an expounded discussion of what Marshall was saying, that we need to obviously be careful of where we go over the next few years for finances and be careful of what we're going to do for expenses and what we need to do about revenue sources.
All right. Thank you. Scott, anything? Nope.
Nope.
Tori?
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm finance, too.
Just really quickly, we'll put it out there. We'll probably talk about it more in a second. I have two things. Obviously, I have my obvious thing. But the other thing is, we have several board members participating in our MSBA equity toolkit. So that's going to be great for us to learn some new things. They have a packet put together and I'm looking forward to that. It's four meetings over four months. Four months? Three months? For two hours apiece? And then we'll obviously have more to say after the MSBA Igniting Great Ideas, which is in June. So that's coming up. We're, the board is working hard to develop and get credits in. And some of us, like Scott, Scott, Grace, and I have not accomplished a board certification yet above the minimum. Jeff is eligible for advanced, but did not apply this year, but he will get the advanced whenever it's time. Probably the next great Igniting Great Ideas and hopefully me, Scott, and Grace are ready by then, too. And the other thing is, just spring sports are going on right now. It was great. Just wanted to say congratulations to Melville Boys Volleyball who beat Oakville. And then congratulations to Oakville Boys Baseball who beat Melville. And then I'm also missing something else here. I'm missing another rivalry somewhere in there. There's another spring sport. But anyways, we love all of our spring athletes and we're looking forward to their success in districts. Boys volleyball for both schools. It's going to be good. Oh, Bananarama. For those who don't know, this is actually a really good point to talk about. OHS's or probably our district's best coach, Dave Roben, passed away in the past few weeks. He was our boys and girls soccer coach at OHS for over 30 years, nearly, closer to 40 years than 30 years. It was tough. He was a teacher in our district for 40 years. Prior to that, he was in another district for 11. So he, he put in a shift. I mean, he stayed past the minimum age he could have retired at. He is the winningest coach, I believe, if you consider both boys and girls, the all-time winningest coach in amateur soccer or high school soccer, is actually at CBC, but that is boys only, obviously. So obviously, our district sends our condolences and the team is doing a really good job of honoring Coach Roben's legacy this year at OHS. And both Melville and Oakville, when they played each other this past week, raised money for pediatric cancer. And part of that was the gold laces, which fits into the banana theme. They have banana sweatsuits, which is gold tops, gold bottoms. So, and all of that leads back to Coach Roben and the legacy he left. That was all his thing. He was such a big tradition guy. So obviously, we send our condolences to his family and he really was a legend for our district. And his accomplishments are almost, they are unparalleled in public schools, not only in St. Louis County, Missouri. Doesn't matter where you look. It's hard to win at a public school for people who don't know. And he won, he was, after Title IX, he was the first public school girls coach to win a state championship at a public high school at Oakville, and I believe 1990 or 1991. And he also won a championship with boys. But not only was he, state championships are one thing. Obviously, it's great to win the last game, but I think he made six Final Fours as well. He won 20 or 30 district championships. I mean, he won at all levels and he was a great teacher, English department at Oakville, so just a unique guy. Just wanted to bring that up.
Thank you. Okay. Open period for patron comments of non-agenda items. I believe you were here when I read the rules the first time, so I won't repeat myself. I have Malita Hale.
Good evening. Can you guys hear me?
No.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Thank you. You know, parents and grandparents just don't have a role in raising their children. They have a fundamental role in guiding and overseeing the education of their children and grandchildren. What I am seeing right now as a grandparent is that this district is very concerned about catering to specific identity and religious groups to help them feel a sense of belonging. However, what I find is not practiced regular enough in Melville School District is zero tolerance, bullying. If bullying is addressed in a consistent and meaningful way, the need to push or over-focus on identity groups would not have to take place in the classroom. As a grandparent, I cannot stress enough that the classroom is the wrong place to address and promote or teach our children about gender identity, gender-related sexuality. When teachers practice what I just described, it causes the majority of the other students in that classroom to feel uncomfortable, disconnected from the school, and leading check-out of their education. Please leave gender identity teaching out of our schools. Please stop allowing activist groups, organizations, or individuals to dictate what our children are exposed to in the classroom. Get back to the fundamentals of education to help all the children become as successful as they can. That's your job as educators, nothing more. Not social justice, not gender sexuality, religion, identity. We have failed, we failed our students. Get back to the fundamentals of education. Schools should be required to teach factual information related to African-American history and the Holocaust and the other dark times in our history, because we know we have enough of them. Instead, it's the subjective indoctrination that pushes collective guilt and an effort to divide and alien children who really just want to be kids. As a taxpayer, I'm asking to reject the textbooks including references to CRT, inclusions of Common Core, and the unsolicited addition to S, of SEL, social emotional learning in schools. We need to get back to providing our children with a world-class education without a fear of indoctrination or exposure to political ideology concepts in our classroom. We, as parents and grandparents, demand transparency in our classroom. And lastly, I would like to propose any and all material or videos that are not a part of a lesson plan or within the curriculum first be approved by the principal of that given school. This way, we know what's being taught in our classrooms. There's not a problem. My concern is my grandchildren. I just want them to be the best people they can be, the most successful person they can be, and only you can do it. Thank you for your time. I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you, Malita. Now Suzanne McGuinness.
Hello. Did you know there's only 37 more sleeps till graduation? Twenty more, 21 more, 21 more wake-ups. Tonight, I got to see my kiddo and their classmates present at the My Path the things that they've been working on all semester. It was really cool to see what these kids have done. And I am so grateful that our district has been able to give these kids the opportunity to think outside the box, go on their own with some teacher guidance to find out things. And if anybody, I know my little kid's little poster board didn't really show, if anybody wants to read 30-page paper on the Russian Revolution, I'm sure they would be happy to share with any of you. Another thing, the actual thing I signed up for was, a few weeks ago, I was at Oakville High School for two lunch periods selling all-night grad tickets. That day, those two days, the SRO officer at Oakville was gone and the two middle school officers had come up to the lunches. It was amazing and so awesome to see these kids light up when they saw, I think it's Officer Mike and Officer Sam. I mean, these kids have a connection and it was so nice to see how many positive interactions from various kids, various grades of, what are you doing here? Why are you here? It's so nice to see you. And that they remembered the kids as well. And for so many of these kids, that's the only positive interaction that they will have with an officer. And so I really hope that in the future, we can continue doing this. But back to, another part of the My Path is, a couple of the girls did a presentation on a building that I really hope to see someday soon at John Kerry in a few years. They have more information on that. I can't even get into all the cool things that they were doing. But my biggest point, thank you for making the school safe for all the kids that are go here, for all the kids, no matter what their background, who they are, what they are. Because part of especially high school is trying to figure out who you are. And we need to make sure that the schools stay safe for everybody to figure that out. And if we start blocking people and saying, you can't talk about this, and you can't talk about that, or you can't do this, that is going to make an unsafe space and we cannot do that. So thank you.
Thank you, Suzanne. Okay. If I can get an authorization of closed session?
Motion to enter a closed session meeting for the purpose of reading of minutes of previous meetings and corrections and approval of same and other items under Missouri Revised Statute 610.021 subsections 1 through 21 and section 610.022 subsections 1 through 6. Hiring, firing, disciplining, or... 6. Hiring, firing, disciplining, or promoting particular employees, section 610.0213. Preparation for negotiations with employee groups, section 610.0219. Legal actions, causes of action, or litigation, section 610.0211.
I need to do roll call. Jean?
Oh, I'm sorry. Jeff?
Yes.
Scott?
Yes.
Tori?
Yes.
Peggy?
Yes.
Jean, yes. Grace? Patrick?
Yes.
We'll take a seven-and-a-half-minute recess.
Where did that lady go? I wanted to go talk to her.